I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, commencing at 7:00 PM. I will call roll, starting with Council President Kritzer.
Here.
Councilmember Fields.
Here.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Here.
Councilmember Slahudin. Councilmember Slahudin. Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
One last call, Councilmember Slahudin. I know he's online. Hang on a moment. Okay, cool. We're all here. Is there a motion to rearrange the agenda this evening?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We'd like to move the consent agenda prior to items from the audience. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? And motion carries. So we're going to start with the consent agenda, in part because we have, on our consent agenda, we have two soon-to-be commissioners here with their families, so we want to make sure we get them sworn in. Is there a motion to move the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pulled? Councilmember Anderson? Item number three. Thank you. Are there any other items to be pulled? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, starting with Council President Kritzer.
Aye.
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 I don't know either.
Stuart, aye.
Aye.
And that passes six to zero, until we hear from Councilmember Slahudin. And with that, we have confirmed two members. Let me do this correctly. We have, where's my agenda? We have appointed a new Human Services Commission member and a new Parks, Trails, and Recreation Commission member. If they would come up to the front, we'll swear you in. And if you want, you can have your family come up, take pictures as well.
I will be swearing both of you in, so if you want to just stand next to each other. So, I will read the oath, and then if you agree, you say "I will" or "I do" at the end, and then you'll sign your oaths, and then you'll go over and shake hands with the mayor and council. Okay. So, raise your right hand. Do you, Shwani Sagalkar, having been duly appointed to the Human Services Commission, and Kimberly Marcelino, having been duly appointed to the Parks, Trails, and Recreation Commission of the City of Redmond, Washington, do solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of your office, as prescribed by law, and to the best of your ability, and that you will support and maintain the ordinances of the City of Redmond, the laws, and the Constitution of the State of Washington and the United States of America?
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Go ahead and sign.
Just sign there, and I'll take care of the rest. Go shake hands with the mayor and council. Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Yeah, do we, just a point of order, do we need to excuse Councilmember Slahudin? I know I heard you say that we're all here, but then his vote, he couldn't pass the vote, which I don't think we're allowed to not cast a vote if we're here. So, do we need to excuse Councilmember Slahudin?
Yeah, we can excuse him. He might rejoin us. So, is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Slahudin?
So moved. Or, I imagine, I can second if Councilmember Fields wants to have the first.
Yeah, he gets the first. Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And motion carries, thank you. Next, we need to move item number three, that was pulled from the agenda. Is there a motion to move item number three?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, Councilmember Anderson, would you like to speak to the item?
Just want to vote no, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments on item number three? Council President Kritzer.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to recognize the very hard work of our Lodging Tax Advisory Committee in thinking through these recommendations, giving really thoughtful consideration, and trying to make sure that we can use this funding source to be able to support a variety of really great community activities. So, I just want to express that appreciation to all the members of that committee, and I look forward to voting for this and seeing a lot of really wonderful events happen in our city as a result. Thanks.
Thank you so much. This will be a roll call vote, starting with Council President Kritzer.
Aye.
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 And that passes five to one. Thank you very much. Next, we will go back to the first item on our agenda, which is items from the audience. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you will come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorandcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the City of Redmond. And as a reminder, RCW 4217A 555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. All comments must pertain to the Save Redmond business, as indicated on the sign-in sheet. There are 12 people signed up in person, and we have four people signed up online. We also have a new timer, so have a little grace. It will, for two minutes, it will flash, it will have a green light, for the last minute it'll have a yellow light, and then when it ends at the three minutes, it will show a red light and it will beep. So, we're gonna all work with it tonight. It's a little better than the old system, so looking forward to it. So I will start with, and I usually call up the first few names, so everyone knows who's, when they're gonna be up. I have Aaron Hamilton, Wolf Adriatico, Chester Anderson, and then Connor, can't read your last name, Graham, I think.
Since June 3rd, the only times the police have shown excessive display of force has been against trans people. This becomes more relevant as I continue. Let's talk about Redmond's Assembly of God, which is a local assembly of the nationwide Assemblies of God, and the fact that Chief Lowe and other high-ranking officers were representing the Police Department, as well as the City of Redmond, for the annual Faith in Blue Community Engagement Event. You should be aware that Assemblies of God is an extremist, anti-transgender, faith-based organization, and they have a very long doctrine of transgenderism. It's full of hate, discrimination, misinformation, fake medical studies, and false statistics. They say being transgender is a mental illness, and we're more likely to commit suicide after transitioning, which is not true. They support and encourage conversion therapy. Hold on, did you guys, okay, you guys asked on what that entails, glad you asked. There's some fun methods that they use, electrical shock therapy, corrective rape, I know that one well, exorcisms, and even brain surgery. I want to share with you a personal side of this situation. Back during my sexual assault case, and the Redmond Police saying that everything that the man did to me was not a crime, and after seeing all the records and discovered that it was mishandled, and stating that it would have been handled differently if I was a cis woman, I immediately requested for it to be reviewed. The officer it was assigned to to review it was present at this event. The officer who reviewed the case, I reported with an anti-trans death threat, he told me that it wasn't investigated because it was too general, when other officers who have stated that it should have been investigated further. The officer who reviewed that also attended this event. This officer also reviewed my sexual assault case. Here I am now, seeing every officer who has had any level of involvement and influence on my trans-specific cases were at this event. Do you have any fucking idea how this makes me feel, seeing the people who have had any level of influence on my cases? How many times do I need to get over, how many times do I need to get fucked over before I get fucking justice? You want to know why he refu, well, let's just skip that bullshit. He's policing the city based on a book that was written through a game of telephone. If the chief was here, I would love to ask him, why don't these colors deserve a relationship built on trust, empathy, respect, unity, and partnership? I will fight and die for this flag and the people that stand behind it. I've died once already, and I'm not afraid to do it again. And yes, your Bible has the afterlife wrong. Your actions have told me enough. I have no desire to rebuild any kind of relationship with you or your department, well, except for four officers that I like. I'm not standing with the rest, I'm now standing with the rest of my community, and will never hesitate saying, fuck the police.
Chief Lowe, Deputy Chief, Mayor, Councilmembers, your lack of passion in taking, your lack of passion in taking everything that I brought to you.
We will be in recess, thank you. And we have resumed. Next is Wolf Adriatico, then Chester Anderson, then Connor Graham, then Faith 2386.
And in conclusion, the East Side should not tolerate this unashamed corruption any longer, and its council must take action, lest the checks and balances preached in schools be compromised by your and other government officials negligent in deliberate ignorance and subservience to a self-serving narcissistic queen who harbors no love for her people, only the money they bring. A toxic sentiment that bleeds into every official and every commissioner she appoints, she whom I confine to one term, the tyrant of Redmond. That's it.
Next is Chester Anderson, then Connor, I think it's Graham, then Faith 2386, then Onyx.
The handout being passed out to you is the method Parks and Recreation used at the two focus group sessions to inform the Old Firehouse Stakeholder Group on whether the public would like the firehouse renovated or rebuilt. Please take a look at it and tell me how placing three stickers per person in either of those boxes tells the stakeholders whether we want the building to be renovated or rebuilt. For instance, if I put a sticker in functionality and user needs, translates to renovate or rebuild, we'll never know, because Parks and Rec staff never disclosed the Linda McMahon's new math formula to determine what that box translates to. The communicated at both focus groups pressed the staff hard on that very question and constantly asked how the underlying data corresponds to renovate or rebuild. Many community members stated, the city can spin the data to correlate whatever option they want. The whole thing lacked transparency and put into question the legitimacy of what the focus group was for. Why did the city need to mislead the community with an overcomplicated and convoluted method to figure out what we wanted to happen to the firehouse, rather than doing the simplest way and most democratic approach of a simple vote, renovate or rebuild? You can't get more clear-cut than that, and stakeholders would know exactly what the community wants. The focus groups were purposely designed to mislead the community from the start, and Parks and Rec staff never intended to actually hear what the community wants. No one on any level during this entire thing has been transparent, open, or honest about anything regarding the firehouse. Having attended both focus groups, the majority of the community wanted to renovate, but as it turns out, and what everyone was questioning, Parks and Rec spun that handout data however they wanted, and resulted in doing a rebuild, which isn't the truth. If the subcommittee council members bothered to attend the focus group, you would know the majority of the community wanted to renovate. Councilmembers Fields and Anderson were the only ones who took the initiative to attend. How is the community supposed to trust the city when it's clear they'll design everything to align with what they want, which has always been to demolish the firehouse and build a new, more profitable building somewhere else? It's sad the city would stoop this low, and now I know how the seniors feel when they were screwed out of their senior center. In conclusion, you guys are really just gonna let this lady just bully you? Like, even the Police Department, you guys have just been letting her just do whatever? Like, you guys don't even want to bully trans people? You guys don't want to strip us of, like, everything we care about in this city? But no, you're just gonna let this lady freaking bully you, because I guess you all are just cowards whenever she's in the room? I mean, you all saw how you handled the thing with Erin when she wasn't here versus when she was here. It's just, it's just really funny to me, honestly, how you guys are like three times our age, and we're the ones who are coming out here to defend this, and you guys just decide to be cowards whenever this lady's in the room, because you find her intimidating? I don't really know. Honestly, if a bunch of 13-year-olds can be more politically effective than you, I think I would seriously reconsider where you're going. Thank you.
Any conclusion? Go Boiler! Next is Connor, and I'm sorry, I can't read what your last name is. Is it Graham? Okay, thank you. Connor Graham, and then Faith 2386, then Onyx, then, oh, I can't try, last name of Denny.
Okay. Once again, I'm back here after taking a long break due to the effects this whole thing has had on my mental and physical health. It's been messing with the healing of my hip due to hip surgery. I have not been sleeping well. I've been having anxiety attacks. This has been affecting my grades, everything. And it's good to see you, Mayor, finally looking at me, from all the last times you kept avoiding eye contact. You guys are getting rid of the safest venue, OHS venue in the state of Washington. There is no other replacements, no other. I have been, I've been to a lot of venues, and this is by far the safest, most accepting venue, and this is, this whole thing is making me reconsider ever stepping foot in Redmond again. I was, I was, I believe you guys, you are listening, but you kept proving you aren't. You kept going back on your word, you kept lying about listening, or, oh, you've not made decisions, but it's clear you are. Shame on you for that. I want you to look at the people you are affecting. They're teen, they, they should not be here to the, sometimes it makes me feel like some of you don't see them as human, or, or care about our safety, or care about us at all. And some of these people will be voting one day, and I, they're definitely not, probably gonna be voting for you now, or, I don't trust anyone in city council, ever now, and I never will. Shame on you.
Next is Faith 2386, then Onyx, then Ms. Corvus Denny, then Sally Adriatico.
Okay, what the heck was that last time? For the record, for anyone who wasn't here or didn't see it online, because a significant amount of it was, you know, out of session. Wolf's public comment had a, at the end of Wolf's public comment, made a, sorry, excuse me, played a song that went over the time. I attempted to go up and, based on an email that I had received, that, excuse me, that Erin had received from Councilmember Anderson, would try to give my time to Wolf, or in some way say, hey, I want to use my time for Wolf's song. And I was just told, nah, I just can't do that? Okay. And then what proceeded was a giant kerfuffle, which is, that was a disaster for Eon Cod. Anyways, so yeah, it just feels like we were kind of set up for failure there. That was absolutely wonderful. So, yeah, let me go back to the actual bit that I scripted, because I, you know. Gosh. Y'all have been ignoring us or removing our ability to be heard at every single plausibly deniable step that you can. I really don't understand why you have this platform at this point. It really doesn't feel a platform, it's a massive stretch there, but you know. At this point, I really, no, I, I know y'all have your own lives, we do too. I know, or at least hope, that you don't behave in this duplicitous, conveniently silent till it suits you fashion, to your family, your kids, your parents, your spouses. I mean, everyone here is stressed, at least on our side. I'm currently dealing with moving an hour south and fighting tooth and nail to strive off the depressive episodes that have been paralyzing me for days, and my friends haven't been doing much better. But I will make at least one promise to you. We're going to be here. I'm going to be here, at the very least. I'm gonna be here annoying the heck out of you, and just saying crap for my precious three minutes every other Tuesday in every month, just because, because this is an important cause. The Old Firehouse was an amazing place for the small time that I got to be there, and I, there's not much else I can do right now, other than say it's, it should be reopened and it should be back. So I will be here, and I will continue yapping at y'all, and I will continue annoying the heck out of y'all, and we all will, at least I hope, until either OFH is reopened, or I'm in the frickin' ground.
Next is Onyx, then Corvus Denny, then Sally Adriatico, then Sasha.
As we all know, the process regarding the Old Firehouse at first started very quickly, shutting down within two-ish weeks of notice without any community engagement, despite knowing the conditions of the building for a while before that. Then it was a very drawn-out process, taking months for the city to even attempt to be transparent and talk to the community. We had to beg and pressure them to create the subcommittee after coming here on school nights to protest what many felt like their home being taken away from them. And now, the subcommittee, with a grand total of six meetings, only two of which are left, giving a very rushed conclusion to a fight that has been going on for eight or more months. I understand, if we don't make a decision now, we may not have many options left, but by the time we're done, it won't have even mattered, because what you should have done is start this process before the closure, with a group being made up of primarily teens. I'm on the subcommittee now, and it feels like it was for nothing. The teen-to-adult ratio is disproportionate, with only eight teens in a group of 25 people, and only four from the group that had started this movement. There is a very clear and intentional choice to actively not include any adult or older outspoken teen in this subcommittee, which feels inappropriate, along with the content with the adults and the teens in the group, by the adults asking personal questions, ganging up and badgering the teens with little to no respect given to us from said adults, or by facilitators. You would really think that Redmond would really care, and our local government would care about young teens' mental health and general being, along with not making Redmond feel like the gentrified hellscape that other cities feel like, but I guess not.
Next is Corvus Denny? I'm sorry, I can't read your first name.
No, it is Corvus.
It's Corvus, okay, thank you. And then Sally Adriatico, then Sasha, then Angelina Corona, I think?
Okay.
Go ahead.
I just want to address that all things that I am about to state are my own opinions and do not reflect on the stakeholder group. Hi, evening. It's been eight months, we've been doing this for eight months. The stakeholder group was formed about a month and a half ago, and I am very tired. I turned 15 last week, and my last year of middle school and my first year of high school have been absolutely awful so far. I'm exhausted mentally and emotionally and physically. I had a meeting with the facilitators yesterday, this comment today, and a long meeting tomorrow going over the actual recommendation process, so, yeah. Now, I don't know if you all know this, I did send an email to my facilitator, ceasing all of you, almost two weeks ago now. I hope you read it, if not, I will summarize. I don't feel like the stakeholder group is actually listening to us, and what we, as teens, the ones who will be forced to use whatever space is given regardless of our input, which is ridiculous, are saying. The adults are not gonna be using the space, and if I'm correct, most of them don't even have teenagers or children at all. I am not being as respected as adults who are not even on the subcommittee. As seen in the overall email I sent with more information, I am taking my time, my free, unpaid, and school time to think and write about this as a 15-year-old who just started high school. Not to mention, again, there are only eight teenagers on a 25-person group about teen spaces. That's something. Another quick thing, an adult woman said that she didn't put much effort into her response for my very long email regarding many issues, because she felt triggered by it, as if it didn't trigger me to write it, because this heavily affects me in my emotional state. This process has been slow, uncoordinated, uncommutative, and lacking transparency. The initial reason I fought so strongly for this was because of my love for the teen center. And while it still is, a lot of my, a lot of what is now, a lot of that is now just my frustration with not being given a clear answer on anything. Notice, this has been made, for six months. And now that there is a stakeholder group, we're beginning the shortest amount of time to help make a recommendation, to help you make a decision, under the guise that it's because the building needs to be looked at now. Can you see how that seems dishonest, heartening, maybe a little sketchy? Anyway, I had no time to write this, other than an hour, so I'll end here. I do not want any officers to escort me, like my friends have been escorted, despite only being 10 minutes over. Thank you.
Next is Sally Adriatico, then Sasha, then Angelina Corona, then David Morton.
Hey, I'm prepared this time. For the past seven, eight months, you've heard over and over the devastating impact made by the unnecessarily sudden decision to close the Old Firehouse, and how, at every single point in this process of figuring out what to do with the building and teen services, the community involved have had their trust in the system and its people broken. So stop doubling down on each mistake, and just show these kids you mean what you say. Show them you're actually listening through your actions. I'm sure the firehouse is not a moneymaker. It was never meant to be. Neither is a park, but money is poured into them for new playground equipment, and even more parks. Like, don't get me wrong, I love parks. I'd spent a lot of time there when my kids were younger, until they became tweens and teens, and then suddenly in front of the computer is the only place they wanted to be, because there was nowhere else. Until my youngest heard there were volunteer hour opportunities at the firehouse, and it was music-centered. Little ones, they have a lot of great places to go, to learn, to play, be themselves, and socialize, and tire themselves out. Adults have even more choices, no matter what it is that gets you through the day and makes you feel alive. But unless you're that very specific type of teen that does sports, or likes to go after school to more school, then there's, your options are nonexistent. then there's... Your options are nonexistent. The Firehouse and the people that staffed it filled that need for the greater East Side and the community and beyond. Six or seven years from now, when all those little ones at the parks are tweens and teens, where are they going to go? Where will these teens go that wanted to settle in Redmond because of the Firehouse? OFH was a place where teens who are neurodivergent, disabled, homeless, abused, LGBTQ+, from diverse ethnic backgrounds, could go and feel safe and seen and free to be their authentic selves and to flourish. Stop asking, "What do teens want? What would your ideal teen center look like?" They already told you, and you already have it. And if you'd spent more than the $17,000 and change total spent in the last three years on the Firehouse and actually took care of it, we wouldn't be in this mess that we're in now. Something I heard recently that has resonated with me is, "A budget is a moral document, because it reveals what your priorities are."
In conclusion. In conclusion.
"Where you put your money shows what you really value." Don't you think that this time, at least, they deserve to be shown that they matter?
Next is Sasha, then Angelina Corona, then David Morton, then T.J., I think Horner.
Good evening. So when we started out this process way back in March, you guys are aware and you observed how well-spoken and composed and respectful the teens were. And I'm surprised tonight, because the amount of emotion and anger and betrayal is not controllable, even by people advocating for them. At this point, I wouldn't even tell them to hamper that. But it's come up and bubbled up out of the community at this point. And it's really sad because of the actions of the city and the constant head nodding and then ignoring, saying that opinions matter, and then not following up, not giving any answers. It's... The teens have finally stopped being able to mind their manners and compose themselves. And it's really sad that this city, your actions, have resulted in that. And even with myself, at the last meeting, I, you know, I was going to apologize for... I did use an expletive on my way out of the door and called Mayor Bernie a fraud. Unfortunately, that's just not a very sincere apology, because during the last few months, I've observed, you know, leadership that allows staff... Parks Department Director Lorraine Hamilton engage in illegal hostile work environment practices, push out OFH staff, bully OFH volunteers. It's just been devastating. And I kept kind of thinking that I'd continue to help these teens engage in this process. We'd have meetings with individual council members. We would beg for a subcommittee on the council to be formed to provide transparency. Councilmember Steve Fields did make a motion for that subcommittee to be formed, and it did get formed. We all felt like, "Oh, yes, we're all going to work together now and at least feel like this wasn't some big corrupt conspiracy," which none of us wanted to believe that's what it was. But unfortunately, that subcommittee doesn't really exist. It doesn't actually fulfill any of the duties that it was voted into formation for on public record. The purpose of that subcommittee, of those three council members, was to ensure transparency and engage with our community on the topic of decision-making process for Old Firehouse. That's not happening. The subcommittee has been entirely blocked from performing that function. They've been told that they are just to observe a group of stakeholders, most of which are hand-selected by the city, a large chunk of which work for the city. And as a parent of a teen that's a stakeholder, it's just... It's so disappointing. It's inappropriately late on a weeknight, on a school night, and she's having to sit through this meeting where it's very orchestrated to lead to one recommendation, which is to rebuild and ultimately get rid of the Old Firehouse. She's having to deal with adults being outnumbered by adults because less teens are on the stakeholder group. So she feels bullied. It's just very disappointing. I hope you guys can lead these guys a little better.
Next is Angelina Corona, then David Morton, then T.J. Horner.
Hi, I am just here about noise ordinance and enforcing peaceful enjoyment. And so, just four areas. Is that I'm... I live on Lake Smamish. I've lived in Redmond 23 years, on Lake Smamish about 20 years. And the rowing team is getting much more, I would say, aggressive. They use the bullhorns that are electrified with amplifiers on it. They wear headsets with amplifiers, and it will ricochet off of our homes. And the decibels are up to 91 from these. And no matter how many times we call, we ask for assistance, they just ignore us. It gets worse. Now they have... They're racing, and so they'll have like 20 shells out there, and they're all using amplifiers. And so the police can't do anything. They refer... King County will refer us back to Redmond. Redmond says it's King County because it's on the water. But in actuality, this is a business that is on Redmond property. It is the rowing club, the Smamish Rowing Club, I think. And so, as a community, we keep... We'll say, "Hey, we can hear you. You know, you're this far away." So we would just like to see what we can do on enforcing that peaceful enjoyment. Building codes updating to include condos and apartments, because it's growing, and the building code doesn't deal with noise for condos and apartments. And if we could possibly update to King County, their code. Vehicles muffler engine noise. We deal with that a lot over by the lake, and it's really difficult for police to enforce due to the noise code, because they don't have the equipment to actually calculate the noise, and then they have to hear it. And so if we could... There was discussion about that several years ago, about how to help them enforce that and possibly changing the code. And then the gate... Idlewood Park. If you could update the websites and go on Google, because it says it's a 24-hour park. So we have people coming up at 10:00 p.m. at night doing inappropriate activities throughout the night, 2:00 a.m., 1:00 a.m., if that could be updated. And then, you know, because we constantly are calling the police, and so it's, you know, utilizes their important resources, and there's drug issues, all of that. Homeless trying to come sleep on the benches in there at night. And if there's a way to put a gate in at the entrance, that would be fantastic, because that would keep more cars from going in there and parking at night and having activities. And so that would, I think, reduce the use of police and help them to enforce ordinances and kind of make it easier and safer for everyone. Thank you.
Next is David Morton, and then T.J. Horner.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I'm David Morton. I wish to comment on Redmond's 2026 state legislative agenda. The agenda takes a comprehensive approach in addressing Redmond's needs during what will be a challenging legislative session. The acknowledgement of state budget constraints and potential federal impacts demonstrates realistic expectations while maintaining necessary advocacy. I support the agenda's emphasis on protecting vulnerable neighbors. As federal actions may destabilize social safety nets, state-level protection becomes critical. Attention to SNAP and Medicaid eligibility changes, along with support for immigrants, refugees, and asylum seekers, reflect Redmond's values as a majority multicultural city. This compassionate policy is essential for maintaining Redmond's workforce stability and economic vitality. The Hartman Park playground request is well justified. A failing playground poses safety risks and limits accessibility. The city's offer to contribute $800,000 of the $1.3 million cost is responsible and reasonable. I have concerns about the maintenance and operations center request. Seeking state partnership for a $225 million project without specifying a dollar amount may weaken the ask. It may be beneficial to identify a specific state funding target. The innovative technology section is forward-thinking, particularly regarding autonomous vehicles and artificial intelligence. Redmond's expertise should inform state standards. I encourage the council to strengthen language around data privacy protections and ensure any AI policies prioritize transparency and community input. The housing priorities are appropriate, given Redmond's growth targets. The fact that Redmond needs 75% of 20,000 new homes to serve households at 0% to 50% AMI is sobering. Progressive-tiered real estate excise tax and support for faith-based organization development are practical tools worth pursuing. Finally, I like the inclusion of environmental sustainability priorities. Protecting Redmond's drinking water aquifer and supporting salmon recovery, culvert funding, and climate resiliency are common sense investments that should enjoy broad support. However, preserving the Climate Commitment Act will likely face significant opposition during the session, making Redmond's advocacy particularly important on that front. Overall, this is a solid agenda that tells Redmond's story effectively. Thank you for approving it tonight, and please advocate vigorously during the session.
Next is, I think, T.J. Horner, and then we'll go to our line, online people. I need to ask the community members to be quiet in the audience. Thank you. Please.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is T.J., and I'm here to speak about my concerns regarding the Flock Automated License Plate Reader Cameras operated by the Redmond Police Department. Despite the bold claims from Flock's marketing team that these cameras improve safety and reduce crime, it's been empirically proven that they are not as effective as they claim and instead represent an alarming erosion of privacy and safety for everyone, but especially the most vulnerable neighbors in our communities. In the age of surveillance capitalism, where our most private and personal data is a commodity bought and sold to the highest bidder, often for unscrupulous reasons, it's important we exercise discretion in what data we share and who we share it with. The agreement between RPD and Flock has essentially given this private company free rein to collect personally identifiable location data on every person in Redmond without probable cause and do whatever they'd like with it, using our tax dollars and without public accountability. I understand that RPD has an agreement with Flock, which supposedly limits the scope of usage for this data. But this policy only governs the RPD's usage and not Flock themselves. The policy includes no enforcement mechanism, and since all data is hosted on Flock's own infrastructure, it is impossible to independently verify the claims about who the data is accessible to. Indeed, Flock has repeatedly been found lying about who they share data with, including ICE, DHS, and CBP, bypassing any policy set by local police departments. Just two weeks ago, the Electronic Frontier Foundation reported an incident where Flock lied about the usage of its technology to aid in a Texas investigation to locate a woman sheriffs believe to have had an abortion. This is not an isolated incident. There are at least five other stories I could find where Flock exhibits similarly shady behavior, and I'm sure there are more I missed. To demonstrate the egregious privacy violations made possible through this unchecked mass surveillance, a reporter from The Urbanist was able to obtain the past 60 days of all license plate scans from Flock cameras owned by the city of Medina. Among the data was license plate number, coordinates, and the date and time of the scan. A bad actor could use this data to stalk or harass any individual they know the license plate for, information which is not difficult to obtain. And this was all via legal means. This only scratches the surface of my qualms with Flock's technology, not to mention the well-documented negative policing outcomes, their secret future plans for a global people search tool ripe for abuse, and the potential for a catastrophic data breach given the size of their network. Flock may call this misinformation, but it's all very well documented and reported by respected and trustworthy outlets. As a private company, they are not beholden to the public. They act only in the best interests of their shareholders and investors. With that in mind, I urge council to drop the contract, which enables Flock to surveil anyone without accountability, while we pay them with our tax dollars for the privilege. Many other cities across the U.S. have already done so, and I sincerely hope Redmond follows suit. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Max Rollman online.
Hello?
Hello. You have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Max Rollman. The closure of the Old Firehouse is an example of mismatched city priorities. It is no secret that Mayor Bernie is closely tied to the corporations that make themselves at home on the East Side. Real estate companies and PACs such as Nelson Legacy Group, JSH Properties, Washington Association of Realtors, Shelter Holdings, and First Western Properties have deep ties to the current administration. There's not necessarily anything wrong with maintaining relationships with the corporations that support our community, as it is important that our city can... Excuse me. As it is important that our city can sustain a large workforce and create value for the city and its workers. But for me, the problem is the mayor's prioritization of corporate interests over the interests of her constituents. The fast-growing nature of Redmond requires careful consideration, and the Redmond 2050 plan does a lot to confront that. But I urge the council and the mayor to consider what we as a city stand for and what we wish to maintain. Gentrification is a complex and challenging issue that no city has been able to fully solve. Growth often leads to displaced residents, rising prices, and erosion of local culture. The closure of the Firehouse absolutely is leading to an erosion in local culture. There are no cool shows to go to anymore. Now that OFH is closed, and its future is subject to an opaque engagement process run by an administration that seems focused on disenfranchising our teens, specifically on the fact that they don't pay taxes for some reason. Whatever. I can't help but wonder if this whole process occurring in such an oppressive way in order to justify making a decision that has already been made. It's no secret that the land the OFH is on is expensive. It is no secret that the mayor loves money. It's going to come down to our priorities as a city. Luxury or legacy? The Old Firehouse is now a monument to a question we must answer. Are we building a city that serves its people, supports their culture, and respects their values? Or are we building one that sells to the highest bidder? Goodbye.
Next is... Next is Rosemary Ives.
Hello?
You have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening. Rosemary Ives, former mayor of Redmond. As founder of the Old Firehouse Teen Center, I want to share some observations and reminders about the stakeholders and council processes. The two community meetings had a contrived agenda, filling the time with skewed questions, some of which were not appropriate for the general public. The question format was a setup for attendees to react to city's questions rather than have any significant time for discussion by teens and interested adults about how they have been impacted by the teen center's abrupt closure, what today's teens need and want and may want in the future. I found problematic that the Parks Director monopolized the stakeholders' meeting by just talking too much, and that at least two of the adult stakeholders have no recent experience with Redmond teens and serve only as a representative of the mayor's interests, not the community's. The greatest disappointment, though, was that the stakeholders' process failed to facilitate participants creating together a shared vision for the teen center. We should remember that the purpose of any stakeholders' process is for it to be a part of the community outreach efforts, not the only outreach. With regard to the council process, a stakeholders' process provides the input, but is not a substitute for a thorough council work effort. The proposed expedited timeline is very telling. One study session and a council decision in less than one month from now, on November 18th, clearly tells the public, tells us, that the administration and a majority of the council are not committed to doing the work, the work of a thorough analysis, as I suggested at the council's August 3 meeting. If the council doesn't require the administration to provide the documents, analysis, financial accounting of past expenditures, an option identifying what is currently important and urgent, its projected cost for remediation and timeline, and other relevant information, if you, the council, don't demand this information, you are in dereliction of your duty as a council member. As it stands now, it is regrettable that this reaffirms, to me and to others, that all the previous supportive words, especially to the teens... all the previous supportive words, especially to the teens, is political rhetoric unless council members decide to do otherwise. Thank you and good night.
Next is Noah Radford. Hello. You have three minutes to address the council.
Well, regrettably, I haven't been able to see the entire thing, so if you've done any other intimidation of teens and threats, like, I'm sorry to have missed it. I've had a chance to talk with some other people about this, some folks who are a little older and perhaps a little wiser, and one friend brought up a good point to me, is that the mess that we're dealing with now is not strictly all your fault, City Council. This is the compounding of a lack of oversight from a good generation of people before you, people who have not given other options, and now we're down to one. I have been told, this is hearsay, but I've been told that we have state funds available for renovation the city never asked for, but with everything that's come to light, we don't really see a lot of, we don't see a lot of people who are interested in spending money on it, because we want money to come in. You know, you can't stop progress, they say, which is really sad, because this has been all done in, I guess, the best way to put this would be, just a shambles. It's just been done in the most cruel and thoughtless way possible, just trying to toy with these kids and trying to get rid of a cultural center. If there were any other sort of nightlife, any other sort of way that people could go to shows, it would be great, but we're down to this one, and now we want to get rid of it because there's some money to be made on it, and it's just really sad. You've spoken with your votes, you've spoken with your action and your inaction, and what are we supposed to tell people? Yeah, this is the system. This is how it works. You failed these people. Thank you.
And next is Ralph Liu. Hello. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hello. My name is Ralph, and I am an Old Firehouse alumni. For three years, I've been going to the Old Firehouse, and I just have some concerns that one of the stakeholders mentioned about teens being overlooked while on the council. There's just like a lack of equitability and accountability in the stakeholder process, and teens will voice their concerns, and the city council will say things like, "Oh, we noticed that," and then they'll just sweep everything under the rug. Adults have been very predatory, some parents have said, and it doesn't feel like minors have much say. Sorry, I'm like, disgusting. And it feels like the teens are kind of put under the rug, probably because they don't have a vote, and it feels like if an adult said something and had concerns about certain things, they would be taken much more seriously than if a teen says that, and it feels like teen voices are just not being heard. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Items from the audience is now closed, and we've already done the consent agenda. So the next item on our agenda is a public hearing on the annual update of the 2026-2031 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP. Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce this item, and I will read the resolution into the record. Resolution number 1611, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, adopting a six-year transportation improvement program for the years 2026 to 2031, and directing the same to be filed with the State Secretary of Transportation and the Transportation Improvement Board. Director Helen.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Carol Helen, Planning and Community Development Director, and tonight, the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program is before you for public hearing. This is a state-mandated planning document, which is updated annually, and the list of all significant transportation projects that are anticipated to be built or may compete for grants funding. The TIP contains all transportation projects in the adopted capital investment program, projects from the Transportation Facilities Plan, and other unfunded projects. Projects that have been or will be completed in 2025 have been removed from the list. And just as a reminder, the list is financially unconstrained, meaning that funding is not required to be identified for all the projects. Tonight, we're asking the City Council to hold the required public hearing on the 2026 to 2031 Transportation Improvement Plan Program project list that is included in your packet materials as attachment A, and following the public hearing, we're asking the City Council to pass a resolution included in your packet materials as attachment D to adopt this year's annual TIP.
Are there any questions for Director Helen? Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak in person tonight. When I call your name, you'll come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council on the subject of the public hearing. We have one signer. We have David Morton.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm David Morton. I'd like to comment on the 2026 to 2031 Transportation Improvement Program. I appreciate the city's effort to align this plan with Redmond 2050's vision and bring multiple planning documents into consistency. The total program cost of $877 million represents a substantial investment in Redmond's transportation future. However, it's concerning that only $120 million, roughly 14%, currently has secured funding from local, state, and federal sources. This leaves over $756 million unfunded, raising questions about realistic implementation timelines and priorities. I support the program's emphasis on multimodal improvements. Projects like the Redmond Central Connector completion, shared use paths along key corridors, and enhanced bicycle infrastructure align with your sustainability goals and provide viable alternatives to driving. The focus on ADA accessibility improvements and pedestrian safety enhancements, including rectangular rapid-flashing beacons at critical crossings, demonstrates commitment to equity and safety for all users. The pavement management and bridge maintenance programs are essential for preserving the existing infrastructure. These unglamorous but necessary investments protect your prior capital expenditures and ensure public safety. It's important to prioritize these programs alongside new construction. However, the sheer number of projects added this year, over 100 new items, makes it difficult for the public to understand true priorities. While I understand the need for comprehensive planning to remain grant-competitive, clearer communication about phasing and likelihood of implementation would be helpful, which unfunded projects are most critical. What funding strategies are being pursued? I'm particularly interested in the Overlake area improvements, given the significant development occurring there. The coordination between private development agreements and public infrastructure is complex, and I hope the city continues ensuring that growth pays its fair share while maintaining quality of life for existing residents. The adaptive traffic signal systems and transit priority measures deserve support as Redmond's population grows. Smart technology investments can improve efficiency without requiring expensive roadway widening. Finally, I encourage continued, robust public engagement beyond tonight's hearing. Community input remains valuable for ensuring that these investments serve Redmond's transportation needs. Thank you.
The Clerk's Office received no request to speak remotely. The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve AM number 25156, annual update of the 2026-2031 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP?
Moved. Is there a second? Second?
It's been moved and seconded, and I think Councilmember Slahudin has joined us back online, I think. Is there any discussion on this item? Council President?
I'll just, first of all, note for the listening public that we did spend a good study session on this topic, and so if you don't hear a ton of questions from the councils, because we answered a lot of those questions, I really appreciate the engagement on that and the work from our staff on this. I'm just going to note, I'm really excited for this new version of the TIP, especially I think it reflects a lot of great additional projects that think about a lot of our vision, zero priorities, and how we're going to achieve those, what type of infrastructure that we need to be able to make a really walkable, likable city, and make sure that everyone can get around in a sustainable and safe way. Thanks.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Fields, and then we'll go to Councilmember Forsythe.
Yes, I've applauded the plan a number of times, but I'm sure that Director Helen took notes during the public testimony. I think it would be helpful for the council to hear some response from our planning director on some of the key issues, in particular, the concern about funding.
Happy to respond to those. Thank you for that question. Councilmember Fields. So with respect to funding, the TIP is our annual adopted plan, and the funding, it is an unconstrained plan. The funding that we have assigned for the projects that have received full funding is in the capital investment program. We actually are, as of next year, probably bringing you a TIP that does prioritize the projects, as Dr. Morton has suggested, in a little bit better way. We didn't have the opportunity to do that in advance of the transportation master plan, so you'll see an evolution of the TIP next year to address that, and as part of that process, we will continue to receive public feedback and adapt the plan to refine it to be consistent with our comprehensive plan, as has been suggested.
Thank you, Director.
Council Vice President Forsythe.
Thank you. That was one of my comments as well. The prioritizing, I think, would be very helpful, not only for our community but also for us as council to be able to keep tabs on what's coming up first. Really, really, really excited to see the Westlake-Smemish Parkway bicycle facilities prioritized. I know it's one that I've been very vocal about for years, so excited to see that moving up on our priorities list. And I will just put a plug in for any chance that we can do separated barriers for bike lanes, protected bike lanes versus buffered bike lanes, that we move that up on the priority list. I know that is the plan, to do that when we can, but I'm just going to put another plug in for separation barriers for bike lanes versus buffered bike lanes for the safety of all in our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Director. This is a roll-call vote, starting with Council President Kritzer.
Aye.
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 Councilmember Slahudin?
Aye.
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 That passes seven to zero. Thank you all very much. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the Redmond Town Center Master Plan Development Agreement. I have an ordinance and a resolution to read into the record. Ordinance number 3230, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, adopting the technical committee's recommendation to approve the Redmond Town Center Master Plan Development and Development Agreement, LAND 2023-00296 and LAND 2023-00297, and establishing an effective date. Resolution number 1612, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, approving a development agreement for a site owned by Fairborn Properties LLC located at parcels number 7202410030, 7202410010, 7202410050, and 7202410020. This hearing is quasi-judicial in nature, and therefore the appearance of fairness and conflict of interest rules apply. City Attorney Rebecca Mueller will address this with the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. As Mayor Bernie stated, this is a Type 5 application, which is a quasi-judicial decision. In just a minute, I have about four questions that I'll ask each of you to answer, yes or no. This is to ensure the hearing complies with the appearance of fairness doctrine, and the purpose of which is to ensure this matter is heard in a fair and unbiased way, and ensure that no member of the council has a conflict of interest or engage in any improper communications regarding this matter. So I'll now ask the questions. First one, do you or your family have any interest in the subject property of the application? You can answer collectively or go down the line.
Why don't we do collectively, and then we'll hear it?
No.
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 Do you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of the hearing?
No.
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 Can you hear and consider the application in a fair and objective manner?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Last question. Other than communications as noted in your agenda item and those that will be made part of the record tonight, has anyone engaged in any ex parte communication with other individuals, such as proponents or opponents of the application?
No.
No.
No. No. No.
Councilmember Anderson.
Would you be able to, is there a short list of who those people would be, so we are aware? Is it just the Fairborn Properties LLC?
It would have either been someone, a proponent like Fairborn or Redmond Town Center, or an opponent, who could be anyone.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll now ask members of the audience if anyone has a challenge on the appearance of fairness doctrine as to whether or not any council member could participate tonight. There's no hands.
Great. Thank you very much for doing that. Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce this item.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening again, City Council. I'm joined this evening by two planners, two great planners, from the Land Use Division, Alex Hunt and David Lee. Tonight, Alex Hunt is going to be giving you a brief overview of the proposed master development plan and associated development agreement for Redmond Town Center. This item was previously brought to the City Council at the September 23 study session. Council is being asked to hold the required public hearing for the development agreement. And thank you, City Attorney Mueller, for going through the quasi-judicial application materials. Following the public hearing, Alex will return to the podium and answer any questions the City Council may have. And finally, if the council's ready, we're asking that you pass the ordinance contained in attachment E to approve the master plan and the development agreement, and the resolution in attachment AF authorizing the mayor to enter into the development agreement.
Alex?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, council, and members of the public. My name is Alex Hunt. I'm a senior planner with the Planning and Community Development Department. As Director Helen mentioned, this item is the Redmond Town Center Master Plan and Development Just to summarize the goals of this item and this public hearing, I'll be providing a recap of the project and process overview, similar to what you heard at the study session in September, and for the benefit of the public who may not be familiar with the project. We'll then open public hearing, and then I'll come back and address any questions. And then we would hope that you would, as Director Helen also mentioned, take action on this item tonight. Just as a reminder as to where we've been in this process, in July, we took this item to the Internal Committee. July, we took this item to the Internal Committee and received a recommendation from the Redmond Technical Committee. In August, we brought this to the Committee of the Whole, and as we've mentioned, September had us at the council study session, and tonight we're hoping for a public hearing and action on the item. So just to reorient us to this project site, this project is a 19-acre site spread across four parcels in the town center zone in downtown Redmond. Development associated with this particular development will impact approximately nine acres of that larger site, and the entire site is located within the critical aquifer recharge area one zone. And as a reminder on the content and scope of the project, we're looking at a five-phase master plan development and associated development agreement. So the development agreement will outline the public benefits and establish the terms for the 10- to 15-year development period. Do you need me to take a break here?
For the listening audience, we're having technical difficulties in the chambers with the presentation.
And they cannot hear online either.
I don't know if it's Teams they can't hear online, or TV.
Okay, thank you.
Just one moment, Alex. We're going to make sure that we can, the TV audience can hear us. The Teams audience cannot hear us. Teams cannot hear us right now. Let's see. Technology. Oh, we can hear now. It's back up. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alex.
Okay, thank you. So, an overview of this project. This is a five-phase master plan development and associated development agreement. The development agreement establishes the terms of this master plan over a 10- to 15-year development period, and the master plan establishes the conceptual approval for the overall scope of those five phases. So with the master plan, we're looking at the high-level conceptual approval, things like building, massing, overall circulation network, number of units, types of land uses, things like that. And then individual building design will come later with site plan entitlement, which is a different type of land use permit. It's also worth noting that much of the existing Redmond Town Center commercial shopping area will remain as part of this development and will not be affected by the master plan, namely those commercial areas adjacent to Northeast 74th Street, the east-west pedestrian thoroughfare. So at the end of the five phases of build-out here, we would expect to see between 676 to 1,020 residential units, depending on which option is selected for the phasing. So as a reminder of what all the phasing entails, we have this image here, how with phases one through five. Phase one is an expansion of the existing parking structure. Phase two would be two 12-story mixed-use buildings with either one mixed-use residential and one mixed-use office, or two mixed-use residential buildings. Phase three would be an eight-story mixed-use residential building, and then phases four and five up at the north edge of the site would be seven-story mixed-use residential buildings. So in addition to those new units, we'd see about 55,000 square feet of commercial retail area proposed. This master plan will be taking advantage of the exceptional amenities for additional height program. They're providing these amenities in exchange for the opportunity to build up to 12 stories. The proposed pathway for the incentive here is affordable housing, a minimum of 20% of new residential units would be affordable at 60% area median income. Local business support, meaning that a certain percentage or area of commercial spaces would be reserved for small and local businesses. Startup business support, that is providing smaller commercial spaces ostensibly so that those have lower rents or are more accessible to startup businesses, and all new buildings are going to be lead platinum or equivalent. So now, shifting over to the development agreement, taking a look at the public benefits that the applicant is offering in exchange for some flexibility requests. We are seeing in the development agreement, proposed ground-level public open space in the form of a north-south spine of pedestrian space throughout the site, as well as improvements to the existing Northeast 74th Street pedestrian thoroughfare. Street improvements for increased bike and pedestrian access, so bike infrastructure, mid-block crossing along Bear Creek Parkway, and pedestrian crossing improvements adjacent to the downtown Redmond Light Rail Station. Enhanced pedestrian-oriented design, so that's things like building and site design, higher levels of overhead weather protection, pedestrian scaled lighting, and increased gathering spaces in pedestrian areas beyond what would be required otherwise by code. And then finally, the avoidance of aquifer impacts. All new parking will be above ground, so the project avoids subterranean parking, which can have a negative impact on the aquifer through the de-watering. So all structured parking will be above ground. And then on the other side of that, the requested flexibility within the development agreement. The applicant is requesting to develop this project with five phases and a 10-year initial development agreement term, with a potential for a five-year extension, and they're requesting vesting to current 2025 land use controls. They're also negotiating the pedestrian generating use square footage. As a reminder, and for some context, pedestrian generating uses are those uses, including retail, restaurants, recreation, art uses, for example, where you could expect someone to come in off the street and be able to access those uses. Another example on the other side that would not be considered a pedestrian generating use would be something like a medical office or a dental office, or an educational use, like a tutoring center. So just to kind of give you an idea of what's a pedestrian generating use and what's not, in terms of the definitions provided in the development agreement. So the applicant is requesting that flexibility to reduce the baseline required pedestrian generating use area through this development A decision on a master plan and development agreement application is subject to decision criteria as established in the Redmond zoning code. These three sets of criteria established here, the ones that are applicable to all land use permits, and then those specifically that apply to master plans and development agreements, have been satisfied, and staff has determined that through our analysis, and that is reflected within the decision criteria within the technical committee report that outlines the recommendation on this Just want to close the loop on some questions that were asked during the study session. There was a request for the presentation materials. Those have been posted on the project website, and that link was shared with council, so I just wanted to address that. And then again, staff, as well as the technical committee, recommend approval of the consolidated master plan and development agreement application, and we're recommending, again, a public hearing and a rendered decision this evening. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I will be available after the public hearing to address any questions the council may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak in person tonight. When I call your name, you will come to the podium and have three minutes to address the council on the subject of the public hearing. Dora Refit, I'm sorry if I'm saying your last name incorrectly, and then Hassan Ericani, then Mark Chenovic, then David Morton, then Patrick Woodruff. Dora?
Good evening, Mayor Bernie, and council members. My name is Dora, and I'm standing before you on behalf of the owner of the shop, Andrea Kim, owner of Lanys Taylor &amp; Atelier in the Redmond Town Center. And tonight, it's exciting, the shop has been around for about 42 years, so about three generations serving our Redmond community. We recently were voted America's Top 150 Mom &amp; Pop Shops by The Entrepreneur Magazine, so really cool recognition nationwide. And tonight, I want to say that we love Redmond, we love our community, we love our people, we love our city, and especially, we love our space. And we stand in approval and in agreement with this master plan community development by the Redmond Town Center for a couple of reasons. It's just been really exciting to see Redmond Town Center grow, and to see business growing, to see more people come in, and not only come to the shop, but even in our vicinity, to shop and be happy, and families, and thrive. And I think there's a couple of reasons, there are some citywide benefits that I think we would benefit from this community. And a couple of ones is the housing. I think that by adding more apartments and by adding more space, I think we're going to kind of meet the demand, because all I see is growth. I see people coming in from different states, moving to Redmond, and I think there's just going to be a lot of benefits with that. Vibrant retail. I feel like when I drive around our city, all I see is restaurants, and I love to shop, and I want more retail. And I think that there's, you know, more space for shops and shopping. Women are happier. Families are, I think, better and thrive and grow. The other thing that I think will be a really good key advantage to our community is that there's going to be a lot more public open space. And I think that that's one of the reasons why I think Redmond is so unique in comparison to other Eastside communities, is that our open space makes it such a livable community. When I see families and children, and just people walk through our streets, I just love the fact that our city is so unique by having so much open space. And this master plan community, I think, will only add to that. And so, yeah, and the other key thing that I think will be a benefit to our community as a whole is job creation. We all know that by having more jobs and by having more opportunities for people, our city will continue to flourish and to nourish and to grow. And so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Hassan Ericani, then Mark Chenovic, then David Morton, then Patrick Woodruff.
Hi, councilmember. Yeah, I'm an existing tenant at Redmond Town Center for 14 years right now, and yeah, I'm in support of the master plan. It's only going to be addition for the mall and the bottom line for the businesses, all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mark Chenovic, then David Morton, then Patrick Woodruff.
Good evening, esteemed council members, Mayor Bernie. My name is Mark Chenovic. I'm representing Second Story Repertory at the Redmond Town Center. We're currently going into our 25th season, and I couldn't have come here on a better, at a better time in the theater's existence. The last time I was here at council was about 15 years ago. The theater had been suffering from extensive financial difficulties, and was on the brink of bankruptcy. My wife, Jennifer, who is the current executive director of Second Story Repertory, and I, took over management of the theater, and we can proudly announce now that we have completely retired the $107,000 of debt that we inherited when we took over. We are completely debt-free at this point. And working with Fairborn Properties has been a breath of fresh air when it comes to the 15 years that I have been here in Redmond. They most recently have committed to a 10-year lease for us, which is absolutely one of the best things to happen, because it opens the doors for several grant programs to help us acquire funds to refurbish the space. I don't have a prepared speech, so I won't be speaking as eloquently as the other people have spoken before me. And of course, I do want to mention my beautiful children, Mackenzie and Miles, who are watching on television right now, so I hope they're doing well at home. We were lucky enough to be living in the Polaris community here in Redmond. Being in the arts and running an arts organization, our income is not up to the average median. We are well below that, actually well below 60% of that even. So moving forward, I hope you all have a chance to take a look at what minimum wage employees make, and where that fits into Redmond specifically. And I wouldn't feel true to myself if I didn't mention also the need for parking in Redmond, which I bring up at every meeting I have attended since coming here 15 years ago. With that being said, I couldn't be more in support of what's happening with the Redmond Town Center. It's my opinion, and I'm expressing this as an opinion, but the previous owners, being a real estate investment trust, were not necessarily there to invest in the community the way that I have found that George and Fairborn Properties is investing in the community. Most poignantly, I was, I received some very kind words from Fairborn Properties, talking about the service that we perform here in the community. And it's the first time anyone at Redmond Town Center has said anything nice about us.
Any conclusion?
Thank you.
And it's wonderful to hear you all are doing well there. Great news. Next is David Morton, then Patrick Woodruff.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm David Morton. I'd like to speak tonight regarding the Redmond Town Center Master Plan Development and Development Agreement. I support this thoughtful development proposal that balances growth with community needs. This project represents just the kind of transit-oriented development our region needs as we face persistent housing challenges. The affordable housing commitment stands out. 20% of units at 60% AMI goes beyond typical requirements and will provide about 135 to 185 affordable houses, homes near light rail. This directly addresses policy HO6 of your comprehensive plan and serves residents who work in Redmond but struggle to live here. I'm pleased to see the developers' commitment to protecting Redmond's drinking water aquifer. By eliminating below-grade parking, this project avoids de-watering impacts that could threaten the city's critical water resources. This demonstrates that development and environmental stewardship can coexist. The public realm improvements deserve recognition. The 20,000-square-foot linear pedestrian plaza connecting Northeast 74th Street to Bear Creek Trail will create public open space. The enhanced weather protection, pedestrian sealed lighting, oh, scaled lighting, and furnished gathering areas will make the town center more welcoming and add cosmetic touches. Plus, these investments in pedestrian experience align with downtown policy DT11's emphasis on walkability. I like the support for local businesses through dedicated small retail spaces. In an era of chain store dominance, reserving 10% of ground floor commercial space for local businesses helps maintain Redmond's unique character. The phased approach provides flexibility while ensuring public benefits are delivered alongside development. The technical committee's thorough review and recommendation for approval with conditions gives us confidence that this project has been properly vetted. Some may argue that this is too much density, but consider context. The site sits next to a light rail station in your downtown core, right where your comprehensive plan envisions concentrated development. The alternative is continued sprawl and longer commutes. This project advances multiple community priorities: housing affordability, transit-oriented development, aquifer protection, pedestrian connectivity, and local business support. Such thoughtful urbanism will strengthen your downtown for decades. Please approve this master planned development and development agreement. Thank you.
Right on time. Thank you. Next is Patrick Woodruff.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Patrick Woodruff. I'm with Heinz, and I'm working with property owner Fairborn Properties on the development agreement and master plan for Redmond Town Center. I appreciate Redmond Council, the mayor, and city staff for working with us on this project. This has been a five-year journey, and we appreciate the feedback, discussion, and communication of objectives and priorities. I think that feedback combined with the public outreach we've done over that five-year period has led to a project that better captures the desire and objectives of the community, and hopefully, it has led to a better master plan. We issued a letter that attempted to respond to the com- We issued a letter that attempted to respond to the comments and questions we heard at the committee of the whole meeting and the study session. I'm here along with our land use counsel, Katie Kendall, and Mitch Patachek from Architect GLO. To the extent that letter did not capture or answer questions adequately, we are here, we're happy to answer any additional questions or anything that comes up as a result of the discussion tonight. Or I don't know if there are folks signed up to speak online, but if there are questions that come out of that, we're here and happy to opine. Thank you.
Thank you. Written comment has been distributed to the council, and the clerk's office received no request to speak remotely. The public hearing is now closed. Are there any questions for our staff or for Alex? Thank you. Council vice president.
Thank you. I'm looking over the letter we received today from Lake Washington School District about the parking concerns, and I was just hoping that staff could address the concerns, mitigation, anything to that effect.
Yeah, thank you for that question. Just to summarize, that there are concerns from Lake Washington School District that the proposed master plan will impact parking that they have vested right to through agreements with the developer. Staff didn't feel that it was appropriate to specifically condition anything that dealt with a private agreement between two property owners. As far as construction impacts go, I think it could potentially be appropriate to include conditions of approval with the specific phases that could impact parking to address those impacts. I would also let the applicant speak to this, but I don't think we know the extent of which portions and to what extent the Phase 1 parking garage expansion will impact existing parking spaces. So I think once those impacts are better understood, we can more effectively mitigate those. But my understanding is that Fairborn and the applicant have every intention of honoring existing agreements for shared parking.
Council vice president, would you like to hear from the developer?
I would enjoy that, yes.
Since they're here.
Thank you. I have not seen the letter, so I don't know exactly what was expressed, but there is a recorded easement that grants the Lake Washington School District. And golly, I'm going to blank on the exact. I think they have rights to, it's either 60 or 80 full-time stalls in the garage that sits right adjacent to their property. And then there are different tranches of weekend and evening and week. So, but it's a recorded easement. We have to abide by it. We've had, I think, two or three conversations with the Lake Washington School District about when we have a firm timeline on construction, we obviously have to. I should say it also has, if we can't provide parking within the garage, we can provide substitute parking within a 100-foot radius or something like that. So anyways, there's a document, we're legally bound by it. We will find a solution when we have a specific construction timeline and make sure they have their parking. And ultimately, when the garage is built, they will still have rights to those stalls.
Thank you. Other questions? Council president?
Actually, on the topic of the Phase 1 parking structure, just a quick question on that. Is the vision of that structure that it would be increasing height where there's existing parking, but maintaining still the storefronts that are along the side there?
Yes, that's correct. It would be a two-story vertical expansion of the existing parking garage with no other modifications to that structure is what's been proposed.
Okay. Thank you. I have another question, but I'll wait.
Questions for our staff or the team? Council vice, oh, Councilmember Anderson, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. There was a comment in the presentation that there was a, was it unfinished building or an unfinished, like, I noticed pedestrian areas commented in there, and I was wondering if there was unfinished building decision, if it was, the type of building was not decided.
Are you referring to the option to build one type of building versus another?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that is a building question, and it's not parking or pedestrian area. Is that correct?
Yes. So to summarize, that that would be an option that the developer has to either construct one of two options, either a 12-story mixed-use office building or a 12-story mixed-use residential building with residences on top and commercial on the bottom.
Okay, thank you very much.
Questions? Council vice president?
Thank you. I still have some slight concerns around the square footage for retail and moving to those kind of medical uses. I can't seem to find the amount of retail space currently when I'm doing a quick look. Do we, can you address what that is?
Yeah, so the existing pedestrian generating use square footage on the site is approximately 268,000 square feet.
Okay, it is that number.
And the proposed negotiated number as a baseline would be 170,000 square feet.
And through the negotiations, how did this conversation go? That's a reduction of almost 100,000 square feet of retail space, and I'm a little concerned about that reduction, given that this is our main area for retail.
Yeah, I'd be happy to also let Patrick speak to that, but the decision and the negotiation was mostly based around a desire to keep commercial spaces full, rented out and not vacant. So to have the flexibility to have a space be either a pedestrian generating use like retail or a non-pedestrian generating use like a medical office. There, again, there aren't dedicated spaces, like this has to be pedestrian generating or this has to be non-pedestrian generating. It's a flexible number that flows throughout all the commercial spaces in the site. So the lower negotiated number is really so that they have rental flexibility on who they can lease to so that there aren't vacancies over the years.
Thank you. I would like to hear from the applicant if we can.
So there was a lot of thought and time spent on this issue. I would, and I think everyone is understanding, but the 170 is a floor, so it's not as though we're, that's a target for us. It is not by any means, it is a floor, which would mean if we dropped below 170, we could not lease a space to anyone other than someone who fit in that specific category of use. And so from a property owner's perspective, it's a pretty punitive line because it creates a scenario in which we could be having dead space over occupied space that didn't necessarily fit that category. I think for the property owner, there were two primary concerns. We're going to have a construction development window during this 15-year development agreement, and so some flexibility during those times, I think, is appropriate. And then the other big concern is we have some larger spaces on the second floor. And those second floor spaces, a number of which currently fit that bucket of pedestrian generating uses, I hope those tenants are there forever. They're doing great. We want to support them as best we can. If they were to vacate, some of those spaces would be really tough to backfill with that narrower band of uses. And so the reduction was really focused on getting ourselves some flexibility on that second floor. And a number of those uses, while they don't fit that narrower category, are absolutely critical to the success of Redmond Town Center, Kumon Learning Center, Goldfish Swim School. I guess, I think actually Goldfish fits because we got fitness in. But there, a lot of the medical office users, those bring folks to the center who then continue to shop. So from our perspective, that's critical to the overall ecosystem. So that's a long answer. I don't know that I directly answered your question, but primarily it was construction impacts and then some of those second floor spaces.
Thank you.
Council president, another question?
Yeah, well, actually, just a quick follow-up on this. So, because we heard medical uses, we just heard another example, Kumon Learning Center. Can you give us just a few more examples of what kinds of uses you would envision in those types of spaces? And does entertainment count as a non-pedestrian-generated use, or is that still in that category?
Yes, entertainment would be considered a pedestrian-generating use.
Okay. That's helpful. One thing I'm curious, maybe you can speak about this, but also be interested to hear from the applicant, is a little bit more detail on the thinking around the startup business support aspect and just some more details on that specifically, how it will incentivize new businesses to start there, what specifically is agreed upon here, and then some of the vision potentially from the applicant, and then also the options of residential versus the residential office, options in the second phase.
Sure, so I'll start with the startup business support. That's specifically prescribed as an option within our zoning code as one of the amenities to get points towards the bonus height. So as the code is written, the applicant really just has to build or provide the commercial space that fits those dimensional area requirements. That's all our code really provides as a guideline, but the idea is that those smaller spaces will be rented at lower rents and will support startup businesses. So that's kind of the guideline that the Redmond zoning code provides. Beyond that, in terms of vision, I can see, bring Patrick up here to see if there's a vision for that, but the incentive guideline is provide these spaces at this area.
And you mentioned lower rents. Is it, it would be lower rents because it's a smaller amount of space?
Yeah, the intent isn't that they would be controlled rents. It's just because they are smaller, they're more conducive to a startup business.
Okay, thank you for clarifying also that it's just aligning essentially to the code, not kind of a more creative proposal from the applicant. So appreciate that.
And then, could you repeat the question on the option for Phase 2? Did you want clarity on?
Yeah, can you clarify how, just the process through which the applicant would go with the residential versus the residential/office options based on, after we make this decision?
Yes. So based on the master plan and development agreement as written, the door is open for them to pursue either option. This decision would be made by them at the time that they submit their site plan entitlement permit, when they want to actually consider constructing the project. We would then know, okay, are you going to build a mixed-use residential building or a mixed-use office building? I will also mention that the development agreement includes language. If the office option is pursued, we understand that leaves a lot of potential affordable housing on the table that would have otherwise been constructed. There's a provision in the development agreement to pay in affordable housing in Lufy that would essentially cover the expense of the benefit that the affordable housing that would have been provided with a mixed-use residential building.
Great, thank you. And if possible, I would be interested to know from the applicant if, kind of the considerations that they have just at this moment in considering one versus the other, and what are some of the factors that might influence going one direction or another as we look at giving this flexibility as part of this?
Happy to. I would, just to go back, there are two code provisions for local businesses. One is a certain minimum square footage under a square footage per space threshold. Not sure I said that very clearly, but we have to have a certain number of spaces, small spaces. That's bucket one. Bucket two is we have to have a minimum square footage dedicated to local businesses. So that, it's an and, so there are two sort of code provisions that support a local. We're doing both of those things. On the office versus resi question, we have flexibility on one of the buildings that is proposed on the two surface lots. So one of those two 12-story buildings is going to be residential. The other one building is flexible. It could go office or it could go residential. That decision will be a market-driven decision. If we're making that decision today or in what feels like the predictable future, it's tough to envision a world in which that's an office building. But it's a 10- to 15-year document, and so we wanted to leave some flexibility to adapt to market conditions.
Thank you very much.
I'm so sorry. My computer just shut off, and I forgot my question. There was a question I had, and you can come back to me. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much, Alex, and to everyone who took the time to participate in today's hearing, and of course, the applicant. As was mentioned, this has been a five-year process getting to this point, so I don't have any additional questions. I appreciated the thorough discussion at our recent study session. Just for the listening public, I'll say once again, this has been five years coming, so if you're just tuning in and you caught the hearing tonight, know that a lot of work has gone on, including a time when the council actually sent a proposal back and set a bar really, really high. And that delay is actually, we owe a little bit of that, too. So I believe we set the bar really high on what needed to come back in terms of our commitment to affordable housing, our environmental concerns, especially with protecting the aquifer, and doubling down on a pedestrian and very activated, enhanced asset for our community. So I believe that the proposal before us today certainly meets all of those. Just to mention one of my favorite topics, housing, but because it's come up today in the hearing, having this level of affordability isn't even required anywhere else that deeply in any of our other urban centers. So it can be incentivized and other great things, but this is a good proposal, and this is a proposal that I'm happy to vote for tonight because I believe it is good for Redmond. And here's to the question before us. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. My question was regarding the request to vest into the 2025 land use conditions, and if you could talk a little bit about what we're missing with that. It sounds like there were some commitments that were made to meet some of the 2050 standards, but I'd just be interested in hearing a little bit more about that, either from you or from the developer as well.
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to speak on that. So vesting is a fairly common request for a development agreement. It allows for the applicant to be able to predict what their development environment will look like over the entire term of their DA, their development agreement. So what are the codes that are going to govern this development over the next 10 years? So it allows for them to accurately plan for that, to address what might be, what might we be missing? That's a bit of a harder question. There might be future code amendments that change things that we might not yet know about, but for Redmond 2050, the town center zoning was changed recently to accommodate. So I think, sorry, to accommodate this master plan, it was amended with this in mind. So I think any potential code amendments might render it infeasible or really change the way it looks. It's hard to say for certain.
Okay, and just to repeat what I heard is that we did amend the code so that this project was considered, and so this is essentially a current standard. My general question on vesting for the 2025 year was related to the start year of the planning, which would make sense to me because we didn't adopt 2050 until the end of last year. So just from a timing perspective, my understanding is that the newer code standards will apply to this project because they are known now for the DA. Is that correct?
Yeah, so they'll vest to the code in place essentially in June, mid-June of this year, because there's a provision that allows for this transition to new standards. Since this was currently under review earlier in the year and last year, there's a provision under the new standards to allow for projects under review to continue to be reviewed under the code that they started with. So that's what we're looking at with this development.
Okay, so this is one of what I would consider to be a boundary-conditioned project. It's sort of, for lack of a better word, straddling the two different plans. So that's really helpful for just kind of understand what we're, we're not, we're not going to be building a new development based on really old standards. They're much more current. Thank you.
Director Helen, would you like to share some?
Yeah, I just wanted to note some of the things that happened, actually predated, Alex. So remember, I think we need to go back to Councilmember Stewart's explanation. This has been a long process. The council considered a comprehensive plan amendment for Redmond Town Center that was kind of separate and prior to the kind of separate and prior to the Redmond 2050 update, that was actually a bit of a test case for some of the codes, the policies and codes that we did eventually adopt for Redmond 2050. So Redmond Town Center actually went ahead of the rest of the document. So it's not, it was really in advance, and Redmond 2050 caught up with it. And so its ultimate regulations are a little bit different, but they are to the standard that the council adopted, relatively similar. And we have to get this adopted by the end of this year because those standards are set to actually sunset at the end of this year. And then just the Redmond 2050 requirements would apply, which would be different, but not necessarily less stringent or complex. And so the vesting provision allows them to vest to the provision that we've been working on under the last five years.
Thank you. That was the context I was looking for. Thank you.
Any other questions? Council Vice President?
Not a question, just a appreciation for all of the businesses that are current tenants who have written to us. It's not often we get something like this, that every single tenant that has written to us has been praising the process and appreciative of the efforts that have gone forward. So it really does feel like this is a partnership with the city, a partnership with our community, a partnership with our businesses that are in that space. And I just want to say thank you for addressing and making it clear that the tenants that are there are going to be taken care of and giving us some faith in this process moving forward.
Council, Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, thank you. So a lot of the comments from council sounds more like discussion. Have we sort of blended questions with discussion? Or are we going to have a discussion after the question part of this is closed?
This is a time to ask staff, give staff comments or questions.
Gotcha. So my question, and going to this whole issue of, it's been a process, and I appreciate the process, and I have been involved in it for the past five-plus years. A big part of the discussion that we had was the zoning for 12-story buildings. We spent quite a bit of time on what that would mean for Redmond, what that would mean for public safety, what that would mean for, you know, creating hotspots, the environmental concerns. And we did, in fact, change our zoning codes, and we did, and we did, we had a lot of discussion about this, and I'm appreciative, and I voted for those things. The only question I have for staff is, in this development agreement, is there anything that raised a concern or raised a difference regarding what we might expect to see with 12-story buildings? Did the development agreement raise any new issues or concerns?
The development agreement, as far as the development of 12-story buildings is concerned, is able to follow the letter of the zoning code and the exceptional amenities for additional height program, which was fortunately very clearly written, so as to be easily, you know, able to be administered. So it didn't leave staff too much discretion on whether that would be appropriate, because we understood that council had weighed the trade-offs of amenities to height. So no new issues were raised with the development agreement specifically, no.
Great. That's the answer I expected, I just wanted to ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our staff, for team? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve AM number 25157, the Redmond Town Center Master Plan Development and Development Agreement?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I see lots of interesting points in the plan and to look forward to. I am not okay with the unfinished negotiation and significant reduction of pedestrian generating use area. I have reservations regarding the open option for that building in the DA, and I am not okay with the fee in lieu for affordable housing, so I will be voting no this evening. Thank you.
Council President?
Thank you. I think some of my colleagues said it quite well, but I, it is, I think, very exciting from going from some of the zoning decisions that we made and really seeing, you know, whether we could get these exceptional amenities for height, and seeing some of those exceptional amenities in front of us, especially to think about lead-platinum or above buildings right next to transit that have 20% housing at 60% AMI. That's with small business space and those, and a lot of those additional pedestrian amenities. So I'm looking forward to voting yes on this tonight, and just want to put in my plug as we make those. First of all, just to note for the listening public, hopefully it is clear that we're really, this development agreement is really focused on adding housing and other options to make this, this area really thrive, right as a really great equitable transit-oriented development type of project. And that a lot of the core of Redmond Town Center that people think of as kind of the main shopping area is mostly not the focus of this. I will put in a final plug before we take this vote, that I do hope the splash pad right in the middle remains even when we make the improvement through 74th Street, so. But I am happy to vote yes on this tonight. It's a big decision for our community, and I think it's one that we can look forward to making.
Many families have enjoyed the Bear Splash Pad over the years. Any other comments on this? Council Vice President?
Thank you. I, too, am concerned about the square footage of the retail space. I don't think it's a reason for me to vote no. I would hope that the applicant would continue working in good faith as they have shown they are doing with the tenants and work to secure those retail spaces. We do have a lot of medical offices. We do have a lot of those other types of uses around our city, and this really is seen as a place for retail shopping, and I would hope that they would move forward with that in mind. But I don't think that's enough of a reason for me to vote against this proposal because I see so many other benefits and the good faith that has been brought forward into the conversation.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. On balance, a point that was at our study session a couple of weeks ago, just to bring forward to the conversation, is that the reduced floor on the retail space does allow for more flexibility, and something I hear about the existing space from community is how unfortunate it is when there's empty space. And I believe that in lowering that minimum threshold, we are, in a sense, providing, in a very direct sense, providing more flexibility to have fewer vacant spaces and more vitality in the center. And again, just to remind everyone that the question before us is actually very quite narrow, and I believe that the proposal has fulfilled the need in front of us. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
Thank you. Just want to acknowledge the immense amount of work that went into this. I've been involved with it for roughly three years now, a year on the Planning Commission and the last couple of years here. And the going back and seeing truly, a true sense of partnership with everybody that's been involved. When I think about what is going to lead to, like with the components of a thriving economy and a thriving community, I see the work that's going in for economic vitality, creating that flexibility, having the housing and affordability element come in. While I'm not thrilled with the idea of paying a fee in lieu, I do fully understand the market and how we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what it's going to look like 10, 15 years out from here. Thinking then about the component of livability and quality of life and the amenities that this is going to bring forward, as well as hopefully maintain some ones, some of the ones that we already have, the social cohesion and inclusion piece that's been brought forward with the community engagement, making sure that diverse cultures continue to be represented, making sure that we're looking at the startup community is fabulous. And of course, taking consideration our environmental sustainability. So again, a couple of things where in this very moment, I wish that we could figure something out and not even have the fee in lieu as a, as an option. I completely understand why that is there, as well as the lowering of the floor for pedestrian-generated retail space. So I'm looking forward to voting yes.
Any other comments on this item? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, starting with Council President Kritzer.
Aye.
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 No.
And that passes six to one. Thank you all very much, and thank you to staff. Thank you to the team from Fairborn as well. We look forward to seeing what comes out of the ground next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is a staff report on the progress of the waste hauler contract transition for garbage, recycling, and compostables from waste management to recology. Erin Burt, Public Works Director, will introduce this item.
Good evening, councilmembers. Super excited to be here to give you this update on our transition of trash from waste management to recology. Going to be joined up here by two individuals, Jesse Dunbar, who's our new solid waste management coordinator. We are very fortunate to get Jesse on board. He came to us from Microsoft, where he was a program manager dealing with recyclables and waste management there. Ton of background and details. And then also joined by Alyssa, is that correct? Got it? Campbell, who's the Recology Government Affairs Manager for King County. They're going to take you through the update, a lot of exciting things that we have coming up with our re-transition to recology. So I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, council and mayor, for having us today. Happy to be here. So here to talk about recology's transition as our waste hauler. Wanted to start out by a quick overview of the recology contract. Focuses on three main areas: diversion, operations, and outreach. Under diversion, recology is expanding recycling and reuse opportunities. The new recology store will be a community hub for recycling, reuse, and education. We'll also see new multifamily and commercial recycling programs, embedded organic services that meet state compostable, or composting requirements, and options like expanded curbside pickup and for special recyclables and battery recycling at some city sites. On the operational side, recology is modernizing its fleet and facilities. They're adding new collection vehicles, optimizing routes, and using electric support vehicles to cut emissions. They're also investing in their infrastructure, including the new Broadway hauling yard and updates to the Seattle recycling facility. For outreach, recology will have two full-time waste-zero specialists dedicated to Redmond. They'll improve communications during weather events and holidays, host community workshops, and create customized educational tools for residents and businesses. These updates will improve service, reduce environmental impacts, and move Redmond closer to our zero-waste goals.
All right. To socialize the new contract, we've had a variety of different communications that have gone out. So throughout the summer, we were attending multiple city events. In fact, I saw multiple members of the council at Derby Days this year, and we will be looking forward to attending Redmond Lights as well. Also during the summertime, we launched our website, and we also had our call center go live. So we've received plenty of calls and emails from Redmond residents and businesses, and will continue to do so through the contract launch, so this fall, and then obviously for many years to come. We've had print communications go out, and we will also have an additional print communication this November regarding rates and regarding all the new service features for folks to keep in mind, and we'll highlight some of those later on in this presentation. We also have site visits happening, so not only from our operations support staff, which I'll talk about in a little bit, but we also have our waste-zero staff who will be working directly with businesses and multifamily properties. Again, not just now, but pretty much through the life of the contract, making sure that we provide ample outreach.
So let's talk about the recology store. The recology store opens and launches in Redmond this fall. It's going to be a great resource for our residents. It's going to offer free drop-off for hard-to-recycle items such as styrofoam, light bulbs, electronics, and textiles. Residents can also pay bills, make service requests, and also talked about general recology services with customer service representatives. The store will also host quarterly workshops on waste reduction and creative reuse. The new recology store represents a convenient, hands-on way for residents to recycle more and support Redmond's sustainability goals.
All right. On the operations side, I mentioned that we have our operations staff in the field already. In fact, they've been in the field for a long time, the past few months, or more than the past few months, really. And what they've been doing is verifying basically what is happening on-site for commercial, multifamily, and residential properties. So we've received uploads of information, data uploads, from the previous hauler, including service levels and customer counts, things like that. So our operations staff is going out in the field to verify that and to also vet the routing that we've done in-depth with our GIS team. So that's to ensure that we have a sustainable and efficient routing setup for the city of Redmond. So we'll continue to do that and getting in gear for letting people know about any service day changes as well. One other thing to note is that the city of Redmond, as you know, will get an entirely new collection fleet through recology, so that's a fuel-efficient fleet, and it will have technology installed to help with service verification. So not only will that be a benefit to the customer, but also to our internal team to kind of make sure that everything that's happening on the ground can also be reflected in our system and what customers are seeing. One other thing to note as well, like Jesse mentioned, we do have our all-electric support vehicles, which we're really excited about. I think, again, that's going to be really helpful, just kind of supporting what the city of Redmond already has in place for sustainability action. And at this time, we have ongoing driver recruitment happening, so that includes our internal team, and then also the current drivers that are servicing your city. They have obviously been offered the opportunity to continue their work in the city with recology, and so we're working with all the stakeholders involved in that process to make sure that it's as smooth as possible.
Let's talk customer service updates. So all customer service staff, as of July 2025, have been hired and trained for the call center specifically on the Redmond contract. Recology has been reaching out to commercial and multifamily customers to confirm service levels and contact details, ensuring a smooth communication during the transition. They're also partnering closely with the city, so communications to residents stay consistent and clear. Most importantly, Redmond customers now have access to an extended call center, open 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on the weekends, which offers a level of accessibility that was not available with our previous hauler.
And I really can't say thank you enough from recology for all the support that Redmond's done in order to kind of support the communications that we've had, so I just want to give a quick kudos there to the team. On the outreach side of things, we've mentioned there's two full-time staff members that will be serving the city of Redmond, so what will they be doing? Each year, we'll have an outreach plan that's decided upon between the city of Redmond and recology. That outreach plan will evolve based on all the things that are of utmost importance to the city and also including state legislation. So a really great example would be Washington, all the organics management laws that have been passed in the past few years, and so we will be heavily supporting the city in that outreach work, making sure that tools like the ones that you see in this presentation, including compost pails, reusable bags, door hangers, all sorts of custom collateral that our teams equipped to build and share out in the city, we'll be distributing that as much as possible and as often as possible, a function of how we'll be able to do that that's embedded into the contract. And a part of our outreach plan that will be ongoing is our contamination reduction plan. So that's for both recycling and organic streams. On the commercial multifamily side, we have outreach specialists that will be basically working with properties, tenants, employees, making sure that they're putting the right things in the bins and having all the resources available, including, like I said, custom signage, multilingual signage, multilingual custom letters, anything pretty much that a property will allow us to work on with them, we will do that. And it will be especially focusing on diversion, making sure that we, you know, increase the opportunity for businesses that are already diverting, but also filling in gaps where properties might not be aware of all the resources available to them to divert. And then some quick highlights related to the residential service updates with the new recology contract. You'll see that we have a curbside option for styrofoam, batteries, textiles, and lightbulb pickup. So how that looks is a customer can call us, they can email us, they can use our online service features to schedule that. It'll be on their regular service day, and we have quantities that are outlined and will be instructed by our customer service team. Holiday season's coming up, so one thing to keep in mind is that we will be collecting holiday trees from both single-family and multifamily residences. In the event of storm events, we will work with the city to designate those events and provide extra service to customers to get rid of all that extra debris. provide extra service to customers to get rid of all that extra debris from trees. And then we also have the addition of annual cart cleaning. So compostables carts, as we know, they fill up with food waste, so that's the one that people like to make sure they're clean the most often, so that's offered on an annual basis to all sectors. So really excited about that. And then for folks who have bears in their backyards, we do have a wildlife cart. It's as close to indestructible as they make them. We'll have that as an opportunity, and there's a surcharge added to that cart because it is very heavy-duty. And then another note we wanted to add here is related to a senior and low-income discount, which will also be offered in the city, so we're looking forward to offering that and mitigating any rate impacts for folks.
So what's next? Before the new contract launches, Recology will roll out pre-launch communications, including new service rates, collection date reminders, and potential changes, holiday schedules, and promotion for the new Recology store. The store's grand opening is scheduled for December 2025. From that point on, once it opens, it will serve as a key outreach hub moving forward for our residents. Beginning in 2026, Recology's outreach will continue through new activities and reporting, including contamination reduction and ongoing education to multifamily and residential and commercial customers. Overall, these efforts ensure a smooth transition to keep the community informed and engaged. We're happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Well, thank you both so much. It's really exciting. I know it's garbage, but it's really exciting. Any questions for our team? Councilmember Stewart?
Well, thank you so much, and the mayor's right. I have had so many conversations in community, including at our recent council conversation in the park. There were two people who brought this topic up all by themselves to say, "We can't wait for Recology." So it is a really exciting topic. I also want to mention for the listening public that redmond@recology.com is like a brilliant email address, and it's going to make it so easy for folks to get in touch with you. My, I have a question and a comment. Since you're both new faces to me, I wanted to express a thing that folks talk to me a lot about is compost, and especially compost in our multifamily, so I know that's all in the plan for your teams to be working on, but just to say, residents are really, really hungry for that, and they understand that maybe their property managers aren't, but they would like to be willing partners in this diversion exercise. So just to share a little bit of what Redmond values are on that. My one burning question for you all is, as we transition and the communication to homes and whatnot, that's been great so far, does the definition of what is recyclable with Recology differ from what is recyclable with Waste Management, or are we talking about the same definition of what's recyclable in our mixed bins?
Thank you for that question. You might find that what Recology is educating folks on looks like a larger list of what's accepted. I do believe we accept rigid plastic, which may not be currently accepted broadly throughout the city. I think the other thing to keep in mind is that Recology's facility, like we mentioned in the presentation, it's had some updates through time, and it's as robust as you could find a recycling facility, so we take quite a list of materials. So I think there's some changes, as in things, more things that we can accept, and then that includes the special item component as well, the curbside and the Recology store piece.
Great. Thank you so much.
And when you say rigid plastic, are you talking about those like strawberry containers that no one knows what to do with?
So we do accept those. One thing that might qualify as a rigid plastic would also be the larger buckets like you get from Home Depot. That's a large rigid plastic. It's kind of, there's kind of a spectrum of different things that fall under that category. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. Obviously, you can tell I have a quandary every time I go to my recycled bin or garbage, like where do I put these things? So I'm pretty excited about that. Council President?
Thank you so much. Really excited about this for our community, and I happened to just run into one of your future store members, staff members, this weekend, which was exciting to get to hear about the prep for that as well. I just wanted, on the record, for you to be able to share with us a little bit of the nuts and bolts of the user experience we can expect for residents as they make this transition. A couple key questions, if you can answer them. So as we're coming up to the transition time, will residents need to sign up for a new online account, be able to do automatic bill pay? And I think you mentioned this about transitioning the bins, but is it that we're getting new logos on the bins, or we're actually swapping the bins out? So for like an average, single-family residence, can you walk us through what the actual transition from Waste Management to this is going to look like in the months ahead?
Thank you for those great questions. I'll start with the user experience. So one thing to keep in mind is we are asking residents and businesses, everybody in the city of Redmond, to verify that the information we've received from the incumbent hauler is correct. Oftentimes, we'll see some, there's maybe a size that wasn't incorrect of what we were provided, or there's an additional container that wasn't accounted for from the initial data set. So we are asking that folks verify that information for us. As far as the day-to-day, kind of the future of how customers will experience, what their service is like with Recology, we would like them to set up their account, and their account online allows them to see their service schedule. It can allow them to make requests, such as if they want to change their bin size or add a new service to their account. We definitely need people to sign up for auto pay if that's what they're interested in. That's a new process that is separate to that account I just mentioned, so those are two different items. And our customer service team is equipped to help through that process and making sure that it's easy for people. I know it's not fun always changing your, you know, your automated process, having to update it, but we appreciate everybody's help thus far as well, reaching out to us and verifying information and asking those good questions. I will also mention that we do have a lot of automated communications that go out to customers. So for instance, if there is a snow event during the holiday season, we will be providing automated information. We'll update our website. And then for folks who have opted for certain communication preferences, we'll accommodate that as well. So we'll kind of have a whole different, or a whole spectrum of different ways we want to reach folks. I'll go to your other question about kind of what the transition looks like with bins. So we are not swapping the bins out. However, we are updating all of the service information that's on them, so that includes the sorting guide information and then also the contact information, Recology. Again, I'll reiterate, if people want to get a cleaning on their yard waste compost cart, we absolutely want them to. As well, if people want to change their cart sizes to accommodate for more diversion, we absolutely are encouraging that. In fact, that's a part of our strategy right now, especially with rates increasing, is to encourage people to reduce their garbage size and increase their use of their recycling and compost containers so that what they have at home is kind of accurate to what we would expect for diversion. Did I answer your questions fully?
You did, and I appreciate it. I just wanted to be clear, because I think from your presentation, I was surmised that we were not going to be swapping the carts out, but I just wanted to be clear for residents. His last question would be, if someone completely misses the memo and all the communications up to the point when we make the big transition, will there be, for example, on the first trash pickup day, a, you know, flyer that goes on their doorstep, you know, a final reminder, "You didn't get your trash picked up today because you need to sign up for an account," or what is that going to look like?
That's a really good question. I guess I'll really quickly clarify. Even without having an online account, we actually have the service information, so the show will go on. However, one thing to keep in mind is if there is a day change for a particular household, they will need to follow that day change, right? So if they, for some reason, miss all of the communications, like you mentioned, if they miss it, we will, one, definitely get a call from them, which will help us make sure we come back and get them service so that they don't have to worry about holding onto their trash. And then, two, we will troubleshoot with the city based on kind of what responses we're getting in the field. We have a pretty good look right now on how many people are reaching out, and we expect more communications pretty much through the close of the year, especially as we're sending out more snail mail and calls and updating our website and social media.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Thanks for all the great information. Thanks for being here. I've got two quick questions. One is probably just a logistical nut. In Redmond, we will often use terms around intermediate income. In the presentation, you used the term low-income. So I'm seeing, because if we're going off of a federal level, that means one thing, but here in King County, that's a whole different picture. So what does low-income mean to Recology?
This is a question I would love to get more information to you on after the meeting, and I think that might be helpful, too, in our own communications, making sure that that's extra clear, both from the city side and then what we advertise on Recology's website.
Perfect. And then my second question is, because Redmond has roughly 50% are renters, with a large number of that in multi-unit housing, what is that user experience going to be like with the transition?
That's a great question. I think it depends on the agreement between the renter and the owner of the home. In our, in the cities that we currently service, a lot of times, the onus will be on the renter to have their own account and manage their utility the way they do other utilities.
I'm sorry, in multi-unit? So in apartment buildings?
Yes. Okay. So communications will go out to property managers so that they're aware of all the kind of included services that are a part of the service agreement, because that property manager owns the account. They are the ones who are privy to the billing, to the service levels, all of that. As far as the tenants, we will, we do need permission from property managers to be able to work with tenants. However, our goal and kind of the thing that we're very adamant on is working with that property manager to make sure that we're able to go door-to-door with tenants. We would like to go to all of the doors in Redmond throughout time repeatedly to make sure that that education is very strong.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I understand that garbage isn't the best thing to talk about, and you handle the gooey and smelling garbage, which is the worst, but do you also handle construction waste?
Thank you for that comment and that question. So we do haul CND, our construction and demolition waste. We're not currently processing it. We have partners in this region who process it. We just do non-contract hauling at this time in King County.
Any other questions for our team? Well, thank you both, all, everyone that's been involved. I know it takes more than just both of you, but thank you so much. We're really excited about having you onboard and look forward to more information, so people will understand fully how to make sure their account's accurate, to maybe reduce their size of their garbage can if they want to, and figure out if they have the same garbage day or not. So thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Our next item of business is a staff report on the Redmond Municipal Code update, proposed changes to water and sewers, buildings, and construction code. Erin Burt, Public Works Director, will introduce this item.
Hi, Erin Burt, Public Works Director. Again, I do want to make one comment. The state is going to be mandating a change in the bin colors. So right now, cities, you know, may have blue for recycling, green for garbage. The state is putting out a standard color for different types of garbage bins. Go figure. So we will be having a plan down the road in which to swap out all our current bins to meet that standard. So people will eventually get new things with nice logos on it.
Do you know when the deadline is for that, Director Burt?
Do you know, Erin?
Sorry, Erin.
2028. Or not?
Come up to the line.
As we buy new bins, yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
We'll be putting a plan in for that, but, let's see, I lost my train of thought. Okay, so one of the great things about being a Public Works Director is I get to work on a whole host of issues, everything from trash to code revisions. That's what we're here to talk about on this staff report. Part of the Public Works Department's accreditation process is to go through and look at code that deals with Public Works and to ensure that it's updated to best practices and standards. So previously, we came before you to talk about Redmond Municipal Codes, Chapter 10 and 12. This one, we're talking about 13, which is Water and Sewers, and 15, which is the Building and Construction Code. The intent here is to go through the code, look for any outdated languages, references, take those out, essentially modernize the code, especially in our situation here at Redmond, bringing it up to speed to take us from a suburb to a city, dealing with a higher density, which changes up the code a bit as well. Once we get our accreditation process for Public Works, which will be early next year, part of that further process to maintain that accreditation is we go back and we review the components that got us that accreditation. So our intent going forward is to make this code review process on a regular cadence, probably taking a look at things every three to four years. So you'll probably get pretty tired of us coming forward with potential changes. But with that, I want to turn it over to Rob Crettonen, who's our city engineer. He's been leading this effort, and he'll take you through the presentation. Rob?
Thank you, Erin. Again, my name is Rob Crettonen. I am the Redmond City Engineer with the Public Works Department. I'll be talking to you tonight about RMC, Redmond Municipal Code 13 and 15, and I know you all have received this PowerPoint in your packet, so I won't go through word by word. I'll just touch on those key issues that we should, wanted to cover tonight. However, as a precursor, I wanted to acknowledge that the proposed changes to the code were developed with contributions from many staff members throughout the city. Groups involved include utility engineering, environment programs, maintenance and operations, finance, development engineering, long-range planning, and the city attorney's office. So cast of many that would bring these changes to fruition, and I want to thank them all for their time and their effort. So Erin had talked about kind of the overall purpose and background, so I won't spend much time on this slide. We are trying to make sure we clarify authority to conduct public works functions, coordinate with APWA accreditation. And then, in general, we're just trying to clean up the code and look at outdated code, making sure that we're reflecting the most as far as current practices. All right. So first, let's talk about schedule. So as Erin had mentioned, you may recall that we came to you in June of this year to talk about Titles 10 and 12, and that was Vehicles and Traffic, Streets and Sidewalks. And so at that, during that time, back in June, we did a committee meeting and a study session, and we took those comments and revised the code then, and then we put it out on Let's Connect on the city website and have collected a public comment through the summer. Now, we're taking those comments, making revisions as needed, and it's essentially in final form, so we are entering the SEPA process. We need to do SEPA determination on it, go through comments again through SEPA, and then we hope to bring that for a final approval to the council as an ordinance. Probably, it'll probably be in the first quarter of '26. So then, tonight, we're bringing forward changes to Titles 13 and 15, and those, again, involve water, sewer, buildings, and construction. And the majority of the changes are in 13. That is the, kind of the heart of public works functions there, water and sewer, and also stormwater and other items in there that really are a large part of what we do. And as I had followed me in a similar process as 10 and 12, we'd like to get comments from you all tonight. We can get those here, or if you email those to us or whatever. We will create a matrix of comments and document responses, because we'll have to work with staff to make sure we have the correct responses, and then put it, make those changes, put them out for the public comment again, and Let's Connect on the webpage. And so after that, we will move to, again, to SEPA, and there's yet another one. There's actually Chapters 1 through 7 and 9. Not quite sure what happened to 8, but there is 1 through 7 and 9, that we will also be looking at some changes, so we'll be bringing those up as well. All right. I won't spend a lot of time on this slide. We do categorize the changes as administrative, operational, and substantive. The ones we're talking with you tonight are substantive, where it alters legal meaning, we increase fees, or just the scope of the code. And generally, we see them as significant enough that they warrant closer review by both the council and public. So the packet you received has all, has the full red lines of the titles, 13 and 15. It has rationale tables for every change, so all the administrative changes, all the operational changes. So if you have any questions on those, please let us know. But today, I was just going to talk about the substantive. Let's talk a little bit about changes throughout 13 and 15. We've changed to gender-neutral terms. There was a terms. There was a call-out for the city treasurer in a number of spots in the code, and that position no longer exists in that form, and so we changed it to city finance director. We made reference to the public works director consistent. I do want to highlight this revised definition for the public works director and the city engineer. So in the current code, the use of delegates and designees and representatives are kind of used interchangeably throughout, and it causes, it causes some confusion about who's what, and if a, if a delegate is someone who is in your department, and a designee is someone outside, or vice versa, and things. And so after working with the city attorney's office, we decided that we will add this definition to Title 2.64030. So it's not there today, but we will add it as we come back to you with, with Title 2. And essentially, we're just stating that we're using this code, the term "public works director" and "city engineer" should include any representatives, designee, or delegate authorized to act by them in their place. And this allows us just to stay within Title 13, that this is the public works director authority, and not have to say "designee" or "delegate" or "representative." I really hoped to bring my Mariner Cup tonight, but I couldn't, so this is my soccer team now instead. Moved on to soccer. All right. So let's talk about chapters and sections that were deleted. So just a couple of key ones we want to call out. These include the removal of the sections on water meter installation charges and hydrant use charges, and we removed them from the RMC so that they will now be addressed in the annual utility fee update that's led by the finance department. And the reason for this is this allows it to be updated on a yearly basis, kept up without having to go through a full RMC update, just to change those fees. Another one that we are deleting is a latecomer connection charge. You can see that, that Section 13.15, it's from 1983. It was the sewer that was installed out on 180th out there near, runs from 202 up to Union Hill Road, and we found that all of the sewers have been connected, except for the two for the cemetery. The cemeteries are not connected, and the city is no longer charging the fees. So we're proposing to delete that section. And then our, our overall favorite is we have one called Water Conservation that was, was created in 1916. And it sounds good. It's a water conservation chapter, but there's really not much to it. It's talk about leaky faucets and things. And then it includes outdated penalties ranging from $2 to $5. And so we, and we found that the requirements of this section are addressed elsewhere in the code, so we felt comfortable deleting it. All right. Moving on to wastewater. I've got wastewater, stormwater, and environment, and then water, just to cover these, some of these key items. So the major change for the sections in wastewater is that sewer is now referred to as wastewater, because that's the more modern term. And then we removed all references to storm sewers, which are now referred to as stormwater, and that's one word. And we take those all out of 1304, and we moved the stormwater into 1306 in order to create more clarity on the wastewater sections and the stormwater sections. And those sections were combined in the 1950s codes, from 1957 code. And we're guessing it was likely that at that time wastewater and stormwater flows were allowed to be combined, and that is no longer a city practice. So that's an important change. So then also, this was a question that came up at the committee. The, you'll see there's three fees that have in, we're proposing to increase, 500 to 1,200, five, that's actually a bond amount, 5,000 to 10,000. So we're proposing to increase that. So what we did there is that we used this, the increase was calculated through use of the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index, so CPI, and we would calculate it by going back to the year that it was the ordinance of the original requirement, and brought it forward to 2025, and then rounded it off. So that's how we came up with those numbers. One that I would note there is the minimum project size. That's 1312030. That's about concerning eligibility for reimbursement agreements and a minimum project size. And so back in 1988, $5,000 was a pretty significant level. You think nowadays, you know, $5,000 probably wouldn't even buy more than a couple of pieces of pipe. So 15,000 adjusted just makes more sense. All right. Let's talk about stormwater and environmental substantive changes. So as I mentioned, sections related to stormwater were brought into 1306. 1306 already existed as stormwater, but it, it was what we felt, felt it to be incomplete. And so now, with all the additions, and there's some duplication between 1304 and 1306. The language looks similar, but it's ones for wastewater and ones for stormwater. But they are now separate and more understandable to the reader. And then, from an environmental protection standpoint, we've added language that clearly prohibits washwater and external building washdown water from being discharged into the stormwater system. And this seems obvious, but we didn't have that in the code. And, you know, so there's always that risk of having oil and detergents and other harmful chemicals coming off the building or the pavement being washed into our storm system. So we definitely want to have that in place. Then one other one I wanted to mention was there at 1306115, this language has been revised to address the city's ability to access stormwater facilities for the purpose of inspection and maintenance. And so typically, this isn't an issue with public projects. We typically have a public easement over the stormwater facility. Usually, what you then have is the right to access that easement across private property. You don't necessarily have an easement that just is clearly shown across someone's property. So occasionally, we get some owners refusing to allow public work staff to come across their property to get the, the stormwater facility. So we have to make sure that that's clear in the code so that we can then enforce it to make sure we're able to get to our facilities to maintain them. All right. Last one, water substantive changes. Main items on this involve water meters. There's changes here that intended to clarify what types of structures need their own water meter, and what components are owned by the property owner. And then we also needed to add language related to exempt water meters, which now include rainwater, harvesting, and reclaimed water systems. And those would be, would not be subject to water use charges if they're collecting rainwater and using it, but they would still need to pay for the disposal sewer. So it's, it's a slightly different animal than our standard water meters, and we needed to clarify that. And then, again, you see there a civil infraction fee for unauthorized connections to the water system. Currently is 500, but that was established in 1992. If we account for the, using the CPI to account for inflation, it's now at 1,200. All right. So let's talk about next steps. Yes, there we go. So again, we would like to get comments from you all on these two titles. Then we'll solicit review and feedback from the public and select stakeholders, complete SEPA process, and then prepare the formal ordinance to codify these changes. At an upcoming council business meeting, 13 and 15, by the time we get through the public process and SEPA, I'm guessing we'll be here in the second quarter of 2026 for ordinance approval. And then I did want to mention a couple of things about questions here, just as far as, we'd heard one question that came up at the Planning and Public Works Committee regarding the use of the term "police power" in these titles. And our city attorney provided her interpretation on this item, and I'm sure she'd be able to address any questions if there are. We didn't hear any response on that, at least I didn't. But if you do have any questions there, we could talk about that tonight. And then I would say that if you have any questions on the PowerPoint tonight, I'd like to hear those this evening or receive them via email. And I'll answer verbal questions tonight if I'm able. Erin Mulver, who manages our Environmental Programs Division, is also here to represent, he should, he can also answer questions if necessary. And then I would say that if, for those questions that need further discussion with city staff, as I mentioned, we'll prepare a matrix and bring those back to you at a, at a further, future date when we come back for more action on this. So thank you for your time, and ready for questions if you, or if you need anything further from me.
Great. Thank you so much. Are there questions this evening? There's also the option to send email as well, but I'm happy to have him take in any questions. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much, Rob. Appreciate the conversation. And regarding the police powers term, I did see the email. The email says that that, that term can apply. My question was, does it need to be that term? Do we, do we create confusion because we have an entire department that is named that? So my, my question was like, would the word enforcement be more appropriate? But I will literally leave that to the lawyers. I completely respect that. My one kind of substantive question, and I don't need an answer on this tonight. I've been kind of furiously looking for my own citation, but I do remember when we reviewed the water systems plan last year, there was a short but, but meaningful paragraph for me about the recommendation for council to one day consider a change to the code that would help with water conservation by, by ruling on the requirements for water-conserving faucets to be, to be regulated. So I wonder, since we're already going through this water chapter, if your team has a chance to look at the water systems plan and make a recommendation as to whether that's something we should integrate into this process or bring forward. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Council Vice President?
Thank you. Lots of good work here. I'm, in particular, enjoy seeing the code language around the loan program, because that's one area that I had been making sure that community members know about, that they could connect, and that there's that repayment structure. So it's really interesting to actually be able to see that code and see these updates. I did have some questions around the, I think it was associated with the gray water and the how that will be moved forward, especially considering our 2050 code and how the use of those kinds of runoff waters can be beneficial for native planting and those sorts of things. So I'm curious if you could address some impacts, if there are any, in those sorts of uses? And that can be in the matrix.
Sounds great. Thank you. Any other comments for this evening? All right. I don't see any. Thank you so much, Rob. Great job. Thank you, Erin and team, and Erin. Look forward to hearing more. Really excited that we will be updating some of our code that's been in existence since almost when the city became a city. So that's great. Thank you. Appreciate the work on this. Our next item of business is Ombuds Report. Councilmember Anderson had September. Do you have anything?
There were no additional items.
Great, thank you. And then October, we have Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Okay, we're going to get through this as quickly as possible. During the last, past week, past two weeks, council received correspondence from a community member expressing concern about a recent Faith in Blue event. We also heard about that this evening, as well as the related social media post by our police chief. While that post was made on his personal LinkedIn account, it referenced department's activities, raised questions about inclusivity and community partnerships. I've acknowledged the concern, noted that the council does not oversee individual communications, and ensured the message was shared with the city leadership for awareness and appropriate follow-up. Received another message from a resident regarding campaign signs that were reportedly placed in a city park, specifically Jules Field. The resident expressed concern about whether this constitutes a violation of city policy related to campaign signage on public property. I've referred the concern to staff for clarification and follow-up as appropriate. Right before, after I had written that note, clarification has been sent to the community member. Another community member reached out for clarification on the pedestrian bike safety projects that are currently underway, and details were, were provided on three current projects. Pardon me, received a note from a resident who shared feedback about senior center, suggesting that spaces like the walking track and upper lounge be made more accessible for seniors during, during their hours. They expressed appreciation for the facility, but hope that it can feel a bit more comfortable and welcoming for our older adults. And I've shared their comments with staff for consideration. It's that time of year for events, and council has been getting multiple invites to things. Each council member will need to respond individually, and many of the invites can be found on our council calendar. And multiple inquiries and concern for the flock cameras. We did have an extensive conversation about that earlier at this afternoon's Committee of the Hall for Safety at 4:30 today, towards the end of the meeting. And we are being as diligent as possible to continue reviewing the policies, some pretty meaty policies that we put into place when we did that. So many of the things that we are seeing in the region, we are not seeing here in Redmond due to those policies.
Thank you.
And that's it for ombuds.
Great. Other ombuds, I see Council Vice President Forsythe.
Thank you. Real quickly, I had a communication with the Redmond High School about their potential involvement in Redmond Lights, and pleased to have Park's staff follow up with them and try to make something work for that event. I've had a community member reach out about an upstairs neighbor with some Alzheimer's issues and a hoarding issue, and trying to get them some resources. And in our earlier meeting tonight, I, we talked about some, some resources that I will be passing along to them. Several outreach about the flock cameras, and again, I would encourage our community members to go and listen to that conversation we had. There was a lot of really good information and good questions asked. And then one area that I've been seeing an uptake personally is in school zones where we have the signs that are indicated, the yellow signs that are indicated at a crosswalk that say "stop for pedestrians." There have been a lot of cars actually treating that as a stop sign, at least along 140th Avenue. So maybe we need some police presence out there to educate people that is not an actual stop sign, but it has been numerous times that I've personally witnessed it, and we need to get some, some education out there about those as well.
Thank you. Any other ombuds items for this evening? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, just really quickly, a couple of good conversations with the public who was here earlier for the conversation regarding the flock cameras. Council Vice President Forsythe and I attended a tour of a faith-based-owned property that is set for redevelopment, including some community space, as well as 100 units of housing. And the entire council was invited, and the mayor, to attend the K4C climate meeting on Friday. I, I'm not sure who all is planning to attend, but I did let Jenny Liebeck and the mayor know that I, I am planning to attend on Friday. It seemed like a special invitation, so hope others can join. Thanks.
I will be there. It'll be fun. We usually have one of these, about one a year, so that's great. Any other ombuds items? I see Councilmember Fields.
Thank you, mayor. Also received a, a text, actually, on the flock cameras, and referenced a, an article about data in Auburn being used against the policies. What, the reason I bring it up, even though Councilmember Stewart brought it up, is that I would recommend that we talk about this at our next council talk time. I think it's an issue potentially that deserves our understanding. I think we all, or at least I did, think that this data was certainly protected for the police use only. If it's not, and if there's reason to believe that this data is going to be used, or potentially be used, we need to understand that specifically. The other is ongoing discussions. I, you heard from former mayor Ives. I had a long conversation with her about the old firehouse. I've talked with the teens again on the old firehouse. Appreciate their frustrations. I'm on the stakeholder group. I had to leave the meeting early two weeks ago because my sister had a heart attack right in the middle of that meeting, and I had to leave for California. But I did tell the facilitators and whoever was listening, the, the group was off in other rooms, and... other rooms, and I expressed my concern that we are in fact potentially headed for a failed process. I don't believe we have done the work that we set out to do, as you've heard from some of the people tonight. So that's all I got tonight. I would encourage my colleagues on the stakeholder committee to take what you've heard seriously because it's a major concern for me.
Council President.
Thank you. On the flock cameras, as my colleagues referenced, we did have a very robust conversation at committee today, so I would ask my, all my colleague who wasn't able to attend to watch that before we revisit, although we did all agree that we wanted to revisit soon, I think a lot of us have deep concerns about this. But we also did get some really good information from our chief specifically on the efforts that, that, that our city has undertaken to ensure that our, our residence data is protected. But I think there is, is more conversation to be had on that, for sure. And then I'll just note as well on, on the stakeholder group, that I continue to engage with residents about this. Was able to sit down with some, also some of our RYPAQ teens as well, to be able to chat with them additionally offline, in addition to engaging with, with several of the, those who are in the audience tonight, and, and others involved in the stakeholder group, even though during the meetings, we have been, as councilmembers, listening so that the stakeholders can really have their voices be heard, but have been listening deeply and then engaging more one-on-one offline to be able to understand more about questions, and then also giving feedback to our staff. I think, as Councilmember Fields noted, the subcommittee members did give some feedback on, back to the staff on ideas of how we can make sure that the visioning happens that needs to happen before the information comes, the recommendation comes back to council. So that way, we have a recommendation that we really can feel good acting on in the long run. So we'll continue to track that process as we move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. On that for, on the topic for the teen center, continue participating in the stakeholder meetings. And this Friday at 1:00 PM, I'll be touring the garage down in Issaquah with one of the board members, as well as their, their current ED. So any councilmembers that would like to join me, please just let me know. That way, I can let them know who all is going to be joining. I also met with a community member who's also a veteran about how the city has honored Veterans Day in the past, what ideas had been discussed previously, as there's some more conversation as we're getting closer to Veterans Day. So I'll continue to do a bit of research, perhaps not for something this particular Veterans Day, but Memorial Day, and then Veterans Day moving forward.
Thank you for looking into that. Appreciate it. Any other ombuds items? Are there any committee reports this evening? Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I attended the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee. A couple of things, I want to make sure that everyone saw the email for the November fourteenth rate summit, regional rate summit. There was a separate email that went out to all councilmembers from King County on that. I do suggest that we identify who's going to be able to attend, and make sure to possibly even have a briefing with Amy Si before that November fourteenth summit, if you're able to attend. Couple other things, I was appointed to the nominating committee, so please do apply for regional boards and committees, because I'd love to assign you to some. And we had a couple of things. I will say, we had a really great presentation from Four Culture regarding the arts and culture levy, and it is the work of the Sound Cities Association committees and representation over the years that has made sure that, as taxpayers, the dollars that we are sending to the county actually do come back to our side of the lake to invest. And we have the honor sometimes here in council of, of accepting these grants coming back to our community. The, the minimum agreement that was set for that last Four Culture grant was that twenty-five percent of the dollars would go outside of Seattle in the form of grant making, and it's actually been closer to thirty-five percent with high success rates for grant applications in both facilities and operating grants. So if I didn't convince you before, please apply for regional boards and committees. And to answer the question that came up last week, if anyone is interested in the Regional Transportation Board or the Growth Management Planning Board, please do plan to just apply via the Sound Cities Association process. And then in the event that we are not granted our permanent seats, you will have an opportunity to be appointed. Thanks.
Thank you. And thanks for bringing up the cultural arts funding that's going out, because part of what created the higher level of dispersment outside of Seattle was Regional Policy Committee, which I am leaving, and I've been on for seven years. And so if someone is really interested from the city in being on that, I would be happy to have a chat with you about the commitment of that. But it is an extremely important committee, in particular when it comes to a lot of the levies and implementation plans and what that means. And it's, it's really important, not just for Redmond, but for the whole region, to have really good representation. So that, and transportation, as you mentioned, growth management, as you mentioned, and then there's some other areas as well. So if you can, take a look at your schedules and see if you have any, a little bit of time, and take a look at the SCA booklet, and see if there's something that you're interested in that could fill your, your desire to be part of the region and help fill a city need, and the timing works out, I'm, I'm more than happy to talk with you too about a lot of the different committees as well. So just really want to make sure we have good representation. Thanks, everyone. Any other committee reports? Council Vice President.
I attended the AWC Federal Advocacy Policy Committee, and after a lot of conversation, we are streamlining our proposal and not removing anything, but removing direct references to the Climate Commitment Act and other sorts of things along those lines. It did get a little spicy, and I reminded the entire committee that we, while we have a changing administration, we need to live up to the values of our cities, and I will be interested to see what comes back at the next meeting next month, and I will report back to you on what that draft policy looks like.
Thank you, and thank you for representing us on that. That's great. Any other committee reports? Great. Seeing none, we have no unfinished business, we have no new business, but we do have an executive session. The last item off our agenda is this executive session to discuss labor negotiations from RCW forty-two thirty, one forty-four B for forty-five minutes. Action will not be taken following the executive session, and the meeting will adjourn at, goodness, ten forty-five. Per state law, the executive session is close to the public, and executive session participants attending remotely, please leave this meeting and join the executive session team's meeting. And then we will be adjourned after that. Thank you.